Go ahead.
Good morning. Today is Monday, August 8th, 2022. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Dario Garcia and Selena Salum. Commissioner Olgin, would you like to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance class for today?
Thank you, Jessica. We're supposed to have one of the pre-K classes from Torneo, but we may be having technical difficulties.
No, not on.
No, and it looks like they're not on, Judge. So if you want to go ahead and go forward, we'll invite them to come back for next week.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible.
And now, we will receive an invocation by Roman Bustillos.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, and everyone. Let us bow our heads as we pray this morning. Good morning, Heavenly Father. We thank you for today, and we thank you for all the blessings that you have granted each of us. As we begin this week, Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for your love and mercy that you so generously pour out upon us each and every single day. Heavenly Father, we ask for your continued blessings. Today, we ask you that you send the Holy Spirit to bless the judge, the commissioners, the staff, and all those appearing before the Commissioners' Court, that all of their dealings may be fair and honest for the goodness and for the goodness of the health and welfare of our community, and that our actions further glorify your name, Heavenly Father. We bless our judge and commissioners with the virtues of wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and fortitude to make the best decisions for our community. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to heal our community, our country, and the entire world from all disease and every affliction that challenges our humanity, especially those communities devastated by this very oppressive summer. All the natural disasters, and Heavenly Father, we humbly ask that you protect our military sons and daughters from harm's way, especially with the current state of war in Ukraine and the political unrest in the Middle East. Heavenly Father, we raise up our humble praise of thanksgiving and our faithful prayer through the intercession of all of our brothers and sisters, our blessed mother, all your holy angels and saints. And Heavenly Father, we raise up this petition to you through the precious body and blood, soul and divinity of your dearly beloved Son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Bustillos. Thank you for being here today. It's always so good to have you and starting Monday this way with your beautiful words. So thank you very much and appreciate that you took the time to be with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Likewise.
Judge, would you like to make any opening comments before we begin?
Yeah, just on behalf of myself and our Commissioners, we welcome you to Commissioners' Court, and we thank you so much. As I've always said, being close to us during government affairs and learning about what we do and getting your feedback is extremely valuable for us. We have some amazing resolutions today and some amazing people here in the audience, and so I welcome all of you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for taking the time and hope you have just an amazing week. Thank you.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda composed of items 4A through 4V. Are there any items members of the court or public would like to pull for further discussion?
Commissioners, hearing none, move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, Resolutions. 5A, approve and adopt a resolution celebrating Renner Johnson on his new endeavor called EP Grande Tequila in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you want to come up and I'll read the resolution, and then I'll have your team come up afterwards. But this is very special when I see someone that has dedicated so much time to El Paso and making El Paso, you know, better because of what he does in his business and him as a person. So very special to me, and I'll make other comments about some of the things that he's accomplished, but I'll read the resolution into the record. Thank you. Whereas El Perro Grande, EP Grande, is an award-winning local spirits company that represents and embodies our region. The unique bottle design pays homage to the El Paso and Juarez region, and whereas the story of El Perro Grande begins with a special spirited dog that at times can be a little rebellious and viewed by many as an underdog, a big-hearted, courageous dog that followed a bright star on the south side of the Franklin Mountains and found home in the welcoming and beautiful city of El Paso, Texas, and where this August 2022, El Paso Grande will launch in El Paso and will work to become one of the nation's largest spirit brands headquartered in El Paso region, and where as the Commissioners' Court plays a vital and critical role in supporting the success of all local businesses in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court do hereby declare that August 8th, 2022 be known as El Paso Grande Day. Sign this 8th day of August 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. If you give me the opportunity, one of the things that is amazing about Mr. Johnson is that it's very difficult. You could hang out with him for two years and you wouldn't know what he does or what he accomplishes, and he's just amazing. You have to sort of drag it out of him. Even tequila won't get him to speak, so I don't know. That's quite a privilege to be able to do that. But just a few items that I think are very noted about his business and how successful his business has been here in El Paso, and he's got some great partners and friends here in the audience. But, you know, Minority Business Enterprise of the Year, Department of Commerce, Regional Minority Business Technology Firm of the Year, Department of Commerce, Chief Global Stewardship Award, USDA Forest Service, Outstanding Small Business Integrator Award, Foundry Networks, Minority Small Business of the Year Award, U.S. Small Businesses, Inc. 500 Magazine Listing of America's Fastest Growing Privately Helped Companies Featured METI Two Consecutive Years in a Row as One of the Nation's Fastest Growing Companies. METI was listed as number six in 2004. Black Enterprise Magazine ranked METI as one of the largest black-owned businesses in the nation's two years in a row. Washington Technology Magazine ranked METI number seven as part of their 2008 Top 25 Small Businesses. So you could see a lot of great, especially your contributions to UTEP and being awarded the Gold Nugget Award in 2013 and proud recipient of the UTEP Distinguished Alumni Award in 2015. So as you could see, quite in a subtle way how much he has done in our community. So I feel extremely proud to recognize him today and of course wish him the best in his endeavors and know that we'll be supporting as we do all businesses. We try to support and see what barriers we can take out of the way so that you can be successful as you have been before. So, Mr. Johnson, I'll leave the...
Wow. Well, thank you very much for those kind words, Judge. And Commissioners, thank you for El Perro Grande Day, August 8th here in the county of El Paso. Three years ago, I set out to start a tequila company where we would be one of the best-known beverages, not only in our community but in the states. And over the last couple of weeks, we have had a lot of excitement with El Perro Grande. But before I continue, I want to at least bring the dogs up with me.
They're amazing.
That way you can see what we're talking about here. Last week, the community has been really good. We were able to launch all of our social media as well as our website, which launched last week. Members of my team worked over the weekend at the Humane Society of El Paso at the telethon, the 29th Daniel Telethon. We will also be participating this week at a very large golf tournament at Coronado Country Club Canyon in Capers, and it has just been an incredible welcoming from this community helping us. We know we can't get there by ourselves, and it takes a village to make us successful, and we consider El Paso part of that village that will help us get to that next level. I can tell you we will leave here today and we will go to Mexico to San Miguel, and we will look at other tequila brands and meet with other tequila experts in that region and bring some of those ideas back to El Paso. And I assure you tonight, we will not only toast this resolution, we will toast this community, and we will certainly do it the El Perro Grande way, and that is more bark, less bite. So with all that said, before I close, I want my team, everyone in this room, has been very instrumental in taking part in launching the success of this brand, whether they were part of the tasting committee or whether they were part of the marketing, or they were part of the grassroots of going to Tequila Jalisco. But everyone in this room, I owe a great deal of gratitude to for making this successful. And as I said, it's going to take everyone here in El Paso to make this brand ours, and I am so proud that you will see this on the shelves in most of the stores coming up in late August. But we are excited and we thank you for this resolution. We will cherish this for the rest of our lives, but thank you guys so much.
And because you have such a great team, I'd like for them to introduce themselves. Come on up. All of you can come up at this same time.
Good morning. I am Crystal Myrick, and I am the Director of Business Development for El Perro Grande Tequila.
Thank you, Crystal.
Good morning, Keith Maher.
Thank you, Keith.
Hi, David Sanchez.
Thank you.
Stefan Posiger?
Stefan, how are you?
Hi, my name's Beto Burton with Litoff Burton Partners.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Just before we, we'd like to take some pictures, but Commissioner Leon would like to say a few words before we get started.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, Mr. Johnson, I was going to start off by saying that I was disappointed in you before I saw that you brought samples for the court. So I feel better. Also, you don't have to go to Mexico for tequila experts. I mean, there's quite a few sitting in this room right now. But I've got to tell you, Judge, Commissioners, when I was with the police department as a lieutenant, I think, in the narcotics division, we rented a building, you know, it has to be off-site for the police department, and Mr. Johnson was the landlord, and so many things come up that he didn't have to fix, didn't have to make it work. But it's like that old saying goes, I think the last time I spoke to you maybe was in the late 80s, early 90s, but I remember how you made me feel. You know, I forgot what you said, I forgot what you did, but whatever it was, you made me feel good and it worked. So, you know, you're a good man, and I know that you're going to succeed with that team behind you. So congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just wanted, I wanted to ask, how do we get, how do we become part of the tasting committee? Can I apply for the next round?
We'll make you part of that committee, David, I promise.
Item 5B, approve a resolution that affirms the county's position to comply with the state and federal law but that stands in solidarity with individuals impacted by state and federal laws on abortion by taking certain policy positions in support of reproductive medical care. medical care.
Commissioner Stout?
Just for information, I'm sorry, we do have several speakers signed up for this.
Okay. How many do you have? Just a...
So far, we have three.
Okay. Commissioner Stout?
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. We have here a resolution that does two important things. It recognizes the reality of state and federal law in the wake of the Supreme Court ruling in Dobbs, which overturned, as you all know, Roe versus Wade. El Paso County has always followed the law and we will continue to do so. The resolution recognizes the very complex issues that will arise, some of which are known, like the case of a 10-year-old in Ohio who had to travel to another state for an abortion after she was raped, and a doctor who faced harassment and prosecution, or the Justice Department's actions regarding Idaho, which was, which has imposed a near total ban on abortion that the department argues violates a federal requirement to provide medical care when a pregnant person's life or health is at stake. But more importantly, many of which are not known and many of which will involve local authority and decision-making. Wherever anyone stands on the issue, almost universally, I've heard leaders, whether secular or religious, whether local or state or national, say that they do not believe women should be criminalized. And I agree. I have my own strong views on this topic. But I believe that this represents a strong compromise that allows us to protect women in our community while respecting the law. So I'll read the resolution and then we can hear from members of the public and the court. So it says, whereas the Supreme Court of the United States has overturned Roe versus Wade, which previously prevented individual states from banning abortions, and whereas because of the Supreme Court's decision in Dobbs versus Jackson, Women's Health Organization, each state is allowed to set its own abortion laws. And whereas on June 16, 2021, Texas Governor Greg Abbott signed into law HB 1280, the Texas Trigger Law, which criminalizes abortion with no exception for rape or incest and which will take effect once a final judgment is entered. And whereas a 1925 pre-Roe Texas law makes performing an abortion punishable by two to 10 years in prison and is currently in litigation. When as of July 2nd, 2022, the Texas Supreme Court ruled that prosecutors may not bring criminal cases against abortion providers, but anyone who assists in the procurement of an abortion to fines and lawsuits faces civil liability. And whereas the Texas Freedom Caucus comprised of Texas House members in a letter dated July 7, 2022, to the law firm of Sidley Austin L.L., argued that the law firm was exposing itself and each of its partners to felony criminal prosecution and disbarment because it offered to pay for its employees who leave Texas for abortion procedures. And whereas on July 8, 2022, the Biden Administration signed Executive Order Number 14076, protecting access to reproductive healthcare services to direct federal agencies to protect medication abortion access, guarantee emergency care to patients under the Emergency Medical Treatment and Labor Act, strengthen contraception access, provide more resources and information regarding abortion access, protect patient data, and protect the security of abortion clinics. And whereas on August 3, 2022, President Biden signed an executive order to secure access to reproductive and other healthcare that will, one, support patients traveling out of state for medical care, two, ensure healthcare providers comply with federal non-discrimination law, and three, promote research and data collection on maternal health outcomes. And whereas on July 14, 2022, the Texas Attorney General filed suit against the Biden Administration, arguing that Executive Order 14076 violates the state's sovereign interests. And whereas the Texas District and County Attorneys Association, TDCAA, in its newsletter dated June 24, 2022, noted that, quote, "There remain many unanswered questions about the enforcement of HB 1280 and other laws that will need to be hashed out by the courts", end quote. And whereas the El Paso County Commissioners Court recognizes that such statements by members of the state legislature pending and potential litigation and lack of clarity on HB 1280's application leave individuals vulnerable to targeted investigations, thereby creating an atmosphere of fear and uncertainty for El Paso County residents to both seek and provide appropriate maternity medical care. And whereas the El Paso County Commissioners Court has a responsibility to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of all of its residents, to include ensuring that all its residents feel free and safe to seek appropriate medical care. And now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that, one, we urge the El Paso County Sheriff's Office and District Attorney's Office to exercise their lawful discretion to not initiate targeted investigations and prosecutions into the crime of abortion. Number two, we direct the county attorney to actively seek participation as a plaintiff or amicus curia in ongoing or future litigation to protect the availability of abortion medical services in El Paso. Three, we direct that county staff, in consultation with the county attorney's office, review the county's employment health guidelines and bring forward for consideration any policy proposals or amendments to ensure individuals have access to appropriate medical care under, I'm sorry, unless otherwise prohibited by state or federal law. And four, we direct the county administrator to consider budgetary proposals for FY 2023 and FY 2024 to ensure accessible maternal and child health services for El Paso County residents. And five, we direct that an item be added to the El Paso County legislative agenda that opposes any legislation that seeks to criminalize or penalize a person seeking, seeking medical care that may include an abortion. And six, finally, we stand in solidarity with individuals who will be impacted by state and federal laws on abortion. Sign this 8th day of August, 2022.
Commissioner O'Ginn?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Present, we have Ms. Dora Wajaka here for public comment.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for this resolution. Commissioner Stout, thank you. I love the title, the description, women's health in support of women. I think that carries a strong message to our community. Thank you, all of you, for voting for this. And what I want to say is that I'm here on behalf of every woman. And I say that because you never know when you're going to need the services when you're pregnant. And, and so by saying that, I, I want to emphasize healthcare and the access to healthcare and the access to facilities and how important it is. So when you cast a vote on a resolution like this, it's also a vote towards public health, towards access to facilities, because that's a need here in El Paso. And I can tell you from personal experience that I had to leave town many times for many different issues, including what we call women's reproductive issues. And I know Commissioner Leon, you've also, not for women's issues, but for other issues, you've had to leave town. So the access to healthcare that you mentioned and reproductive healthcare is important because that is considered a need. And when you vote on other issues, because you have the heavy accountability and responsibility of voting for issues that are sometimes not popular and sometimes are needed. And there's times that the community may not agree with all of you on this, but you have to really consider what is important at the end of the day. And what is important is to have a healthy society. Everyone, like you said, all persons, to have that access to healthcare. And I think that's why this is so important, not only to us as women, to carry this legislative-wise, but also compounding the healthcare access. And I know you're going to have a heavy vote in coming days and I want you to consider this because that is a holistic approach of making decisions. When you vote for a piece of a resolution and a policy, in this case, it's just a resolution, but it has a lot of power and empowerment that not only you bring to women, but also to legislation, then you also consider the day that it comes when you are going to vote for healthcare access and needs. And that is what we all need in El Paso. And it's cliched. Without a healthy society, we don't have economic empowerment. And think also of all the doctors and everyone that will be leaving Texas because of this type of legislation. We in El Paso, we have, we're, we're, we suffer a shortage. And that's why we need to think not only progressively, but also in the best interest of everyone when it comes to access to public health. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Judge, can I just, Ms. Wajaka, since you mentioned me, I just wanted to address something. Thank you. I do travel to Phoenix, not for cancer treatment, not because of a privilege, but because of a necessity. So thank you for what you said.
Thank you. And that's what I meant, Commissioner, and thank you for bringing that up. Many of us, and it goes also for any kind of, of different situations, we, we, we travel out of need and, and we don't want to, and we don't want women traveling out of need the same because they, they need access to, to an abortion or reproductive healthcare. And the same goes for cancer patients and anybody else, or somebody that needs a prosthetic as well. So, you know, bringing those facilities and those physicians to, you and I understand how, how much it's needed. Unfortunately, some of us have to live it in our own skin. Thank you and thank you for your strength.
Thank you, Dora. Appreciate that. Jessica?
Next on the phone, we have Angel Uyua.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Hello, good morning. Hi, my name is Angel Uyua and I want to say thank you Commissioners for making this an agenda item today, especially after the city council decision last month. And one thing we wanted to emphasize from that meeting is that we never asked for our city government to supersede state laws, but provide us with reassurance that we are safe in our own city and protected by our government should we need to seek abortion services. So Commissioners, thank you very much for voting in favor of this resolution item and thank you Commissioner Stout for putting this on today. We always call El Paso our safe haven despite being in Texas where it seems laws are becoming increasingly more violent. So thank you once again for this resolution and prioritizing our well-being, health, and safety today because abortion absolutely is healthcare and we should not criminalize or even more prioritize criminalizing healthcare than healthcare. And you are protecting a very large population of our city with this as women are not the only people who can get pregnant. And to repeat Dora's statements, you truly never know when you or loved, or a loved one will need these services. So thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Ulo, for being with us. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And now via Teams, we have Creosote Hughesby.
What's the name, please?
Hello. I am calling in to express my support for this resolution and to express thanks for passing it. It must be acknowledged that the state of Texas is causing active harm to anyone who might become pregnant and it is the ethical obligation of our local government to do everything within their power to protect the lives and autonomy of their constituents. And as a constituent, I am counting on my representatives to do what they can to protect my right to access lifesaving healthcare and to protect my privacy when doing so because of these incredibly violent laws that the Texas state government is passing against us. It is clear that the Texas state government is not educated or informed about the medical realities of abortion or any other form of reproductive healthcare. And protecting our right to access this necessary care and our privacy when doing so is vital to saving lives of people in El Paso who may experience pregnancy or may need an abortion. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Judge, we did receive one more via phone, Mr. Carlos Montijo.
Mr. Montijo?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, uh-huh. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. I've, we've visited several times before to the county and also to the city. Carlos Montijo is a pastor of Thorn Crown Covenant Baptist Church and I'm very concerned about this resolution. I haven't gotten a chance to look at it carefully, but I was also there when the city council tried to essentially decriminalize abortion in, in our city. And as we've made very clear before that, and I want to make clear here as well, that this is not a women's right issue. Abortion is not a women's right issue. This is not about women's rights. This is about the life, the right to life of the unborn. And this is an issue of murder and how we should regard murder in our county. It is very critical to, we, we keep ignoring the issue of the unborn in favor of the women's rights to kill her child. And this is completely backwards in any normal sense of, 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 of basic common morality. And so I'm appealing to you all once again to do the right thing and to, to criminalize abortion and to not allow people, allow women or men or doctors to kill unborn children when they have done nothing wrong, they have committed no crime, and taking away their life is unjust and evil, especially in the sight of God. And all of us will have to give an account for promoting abortion or for doing these kinds of things that God clearly calls sin. So I appeal to all of you again to do the right thing and to not allow this encroachment of trying to decriminalize abortion. This is not a women's reproductive care or women's reproductive rights or women's health issue. There is no need for abortion in any circumstance. There is no need to intentionally kill a child in order to protect the life of the mother. Sometimes the child may have to be extracted or removed in, in very, very minor cases of, of issues such as ectopic pregnancies, but that still is not the same thing as intentionally taking the life of the child in abortion. So we need to, I think we need to be very careful and actually focus on what the issue really is about. This is not about women's health. It is about the right to life of the unborn child. And it is very important that we start thinking about this in the proper way to start considering primarily the children, the unborn children. This is what the issue is really about. It is critical for us to be aware of that reality and to address the issue where it actually lies. We need to stop painting these, these liberal political agendas, these agendas, these feminist agendas, frankly, to be honest, to try to give women the right to do these things that are not appropriate, that, that would be inappropriate in any other situation. It is always wrong to kill, to take the life of a person that has done nothing wrong, that has not deserved it. In no circumstances, a child deserves to be killed or murdered in the, in the case of abortions, in none. Not rape, not incest, not because the baby is not wanted, not because it's inconvenient. None of those are legitimate reasons to kill a child. And it is important to fray, frame our laws to protect these unborn children from these political agendas that are trying to snuff them out and take away their fundamental right to life. And I could have a lot more to say, but I will leave it at that for now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Our next speaker, we have Ms. Perla Galindo.
Good morning to the Commissioners Court. Thank you for having us here and for voting to protect rights for all gestating persons in El Paso County. As someone who lives in the unincorporated part of El Paso County, it is the most crucial when I come to this court and I see that you guys are protecting the rights for all people in El Paso County, just not in the city of El Paso. I am the co-leader of a local organization called Frontera Folks for Reproductive Justice. We are a grassroots organization that aim to increase access of contraception and sexual education in El Paso County and beyond. As a co-leader of this organization, we have seen firsthand the effects of the criminalization of abortion and how it trickles down to all portions of our people. We serve young people. We have people of all ages asking us questions. We have, unfortunately... We have unfortunately seen an increase of people desperate to receive essential reproductive healthcare either here in Texas or they're willing to travel as far as New Mexico, Colorado, or any other safe haven that aims to protect the access of reproductive healthcare for all people. As a co-leader of this organization, again, I truly believe in the work that you guys are doing. I believe that El Paso County should be a haven in Texas for any and all people seeking to receive emergency contraception, seeking to receive any type of reproductive healthcare, and any type of education at all. As we've heard today, we all have different points of views and we all fall on different ends of the spectrum, but it brings me great pride to have the county commissioners and the county court aim to protect us, aim to protect access, and aim to protect all people and their right to reproductive healthcare. So thank you so much for having us here and for your resolution.
And those were all the speakers we have for this resolution.
You know, I, one of the things I learned about, I want to make sure that no one is vulnerable or sort of believes that everything is going to be okay under all different circumstances. So I've asked Christina, our, you know, county attorney, to talk a little bit about, you know, where the vulnerability is and what can happen and so that we can know exactly some of the vulnerable situations of, of this law. Okay, so you want to come up here, Christina?
Sure.
Are you okay? I just felt obligated that someone would not understand the complete vulnerability that's involved in, in this law.
Yes. Good, um, good morning, County Judge, Commissioners. Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. Well, there's various laws right now that are taking place, and that's one of the, the issues that continues to be litigated and, and continues to be discussed in the public sphere, if you see a lot of the news articles on it, but specifically as it applies to what it means now for the Texas law. So we had the overturning of the Roe versus Roy decision. We know at the end of the month of final judgment, well, final judgment has already been entered, which means probably around August 30th, then there's no more abortion that would be an automatic right throughout the state. States can individually decide. But with that said, specifically in Texas, we have HB 1281, in which you had referenced in the, in the resolution as being the, the trigger law. So essentially what that means is that abortion would be outlawed in Texas. There's no specific exceptions. There is one exception if, if, if there's an issue with the life of, of the mother, but in very limited circumstances. What that does is it criminalizes, it's very specific, it criminalizes the providers that are, would provide abortion services to, to individuals. Now with that said, the law also says specifically it will not, for, you know, I'm not going to use any technical terms, but for all intensive purposes, what it says, we will not go after the individual that is seeking the abortion. But with that said, there's a lot of complexities. There's a lot of organizations that have also recognized, to include the TDCAA, that it's not as clear cut. So one of the issues, for example, that we have seen and that we know about is that even though you do not specifically criminalize the individual that would seek abortion services, it does not mean that there are not operational or mechanical issues in terms of how investigations happen, right? So you inevitably, or someone inevitably, whether it be a member of law enforcement, district attorney's office, have to gather some sort of evidence or information to make a case. So again, even though the end result may be no final prosecution of an individual who has an abortion, it doesn't necessarily mean that there is no investigation, discussion, depositions, which means the questioning of individuals, looking at particular health records of an individual that may seek an abortion. And just by one way of example, I believe it was in spring, in April of 2022, we know in Starr County, we had an individual who was seeking medical services at a hospital. Hospital staff reported that individual to law enforcement. The sheriff of that specific town arrested that person. Eventually, the case gets presented to the district attorney's office, who does not move forward with the investigation. But the meantime, you have an arrest, you have an investigation, you have questioning of the individual. So there is not as, to say that the individual is completely isolated from being questioned or in fact criminalized, there's all those other ancillary issues that take place in order, for example, to make the case for who these, for which this law criminalizes. And that's against, again, the, the abortion providers. So that's where we are now. We can expect possibly within the, the next legislative session that there'll be other bills that are introduced by the, the Texas legislature that will speak more to this and also perhaps provide other clarity. We know that the courts, again, a lot of them are in current litigation right now. There's a lot of other issues with regards to how states, other states are looking at the issue, how they will look at the issue that, that, for individuals that either travel there for certain medical services, or perhaps they provide certain medical services from, from, for Texas individuals that go seek out the, the medical care there. So it's a complicated issue, continues to be litigated, and not so clear cut in a lot of ways.
Well, thank you, Christina.
Yes, sir.
And obviously, the idea of the resolution is to push so that these laws will protect them completely and not leave these vulnerable situations, which we have at this point in time.
I know you already voted, but I don't know if it could be reconsidered. We were talking. There's not a, there's, there hasn't been a response by the district attorney when it comes whether or not she is going to prosecute these, these cases or not. And, and certainly, you know, we haven't heard from the sheriff. Is there any consideration to include maybe in a resolution or a separate item, or can you all request that? It would be nice if we could, you know, it would be positive if we could ask the DA and the sheriff her response whether or not they're going to do this. I think that just, you know, a resolution is non-binding, but there has not been a response from, from her, from DA Rosales. We, the community, a lot of us women, are waiting for that response. And as the court, I would, I would ask that you petition her to respond as well as the sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could that be considered?
I think there's a, I think their, their hands are a little bit more tight than we are as, because of being a Commissioner's versus from the law enforcement side. So Christina, you want to address that?
Yeah, just really quick. I mean, the court can always reconsider whatever they want to do in terms of the matter of procedure, if you wanted to add something in there. In terms of it, you, you know, just stating something, I think this, this particular resolution does give, I think, clear direction, at least to staff and to the county attorney's office and what you would like for us to do. In fact, we have direct, you know, county attorney's office direct to the county staff to do X, Y, and Z. That's certainly an ask, of course, that this court can take. I would just add, in terms of how this scheme works out, just for the benefit of the public, you know, the sheriff is obviously his own elected, he's in his own elected position, he's an elected official. Of course, the Commissioners' Court oversees budget of elected officials, but they have their own core functions and sphere of authority, and quite frankly, also their own obligations under the law, if you will, to determine and to review and to look at certain, certain crimes that come across their desk. And so what this particular ask is for the sheriff's office and of course the DA, is to not initiate these targeted investigations. I think from the, from the perspective of law enforcement and at least for the sheriff, and I don't, I don't want to speak for him, but just knowing how the schemes work out, is that there is an inherent obligation for law enforcement to review complaints that come in, right? We know what the state law says in terms of the actions and, and what it's criminalizing right now, whether we would agree with it or not. However, there's still that initial review that they have to do, and this is only just to describe the process or the obligations that law enforcement have to do, but it certainly does not preclude this particular body to make those specific ask, if you want to, for the district attorney or the, the sheriff's office. I don't necessarily know if the resolution, I guess at this time lends itself to that, but that's certainly, you know, in a public statement or as part of the record that this court would, could consider as an ask to them, if they would consider making any public statements in terms of where they feel that their position is in, in this particular law. And maybe at this time, again, not speaking for them, they need more clarity, more information just based on where we are with the legal system and the issues that are coming out and continue to evolve. But again, that doesn't preclude an ask, if you will. You can't make any elected official do certain things, as they can't make you do this particular body or any individual elected official do certain things, but that, that certainly can be an ask, and so it's up to this court how they would like to pursue.
And I think, like you said, Christina, that the resolution allows us to pursue that. And, and so I know I've had discussions with, with them, both of them, and, you know, there's never any idea that they would pursue or, or do anything active on their part, but that they, you know, if it came to them, then they have certain legal obligations to, to look at what, what's presented. But looking at the backlog and looking at all the things that they have to do, they obviously have not prioritized in, in any way that I understand. But I, I would hate to speak for both of them, but I felt comfortable that what I've heard from them is in alignment with, with the resolution that Commissioner Stout has presented.
And, you know, we, we were very, very thoughtful and deliberative about the way that we wrote this resolution, and I want to thank the county attorney's office for that. I also did speak with the sheriff and the, and the DA. I'm not going to speak on their behalf on, you know, what their, what their thoughts are, but we did take their feedback and their input as part of how we, how we, how we wrote this resolution. But, you know, we, we do, like we said, we, we do urge them, I think, very heavily to do what the resolution says and, and, and not target investigations against people who are seeking abortions. And, you know, that's, that's about what we can do, right? And we need y'all's help as well to apply pressure to make sure that they, that they're upholding what this community feels is, is necessary. And we'll, we'll continue to have, I will continue to have at least those conversations with them, and I know probably the rest of the court will as well, to, to, to continue to urge them and continue to ask them to, to make sure that our community feels, everybody in our community feels as safe as they possibly can. So I think that, I, I think that, you know, the, the resolution is a good resolution and, and it allows us to do a lot of things, especially staff-wise. And so I, I mean, I don't know if we need to change anything, but we can continue to, to make sure that we, that we hold people accountable to what our values and what our views are as a community.
Thank you, Commissioner Stout. Thank you, Christina. Okay, Jessica? Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, we will. It's better when you're asked.
Hey, congratulations.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Take care.
Item number six is public comment. We do not have any speakers signed up for public comment. We'll take no action for item number six. Item seven, presentation. 7A, receive a presentation from the El Paso Central Appraisal District on the County of El Paso 2022 certified appraisal roll.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Jessica Garza, Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. Today on your agenda, we have several items that are related to our budget FY23 process. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Kilgore and Mr. David Stone from the El Paso Central Appraisal District.
Thank you for having us, Judge Commissioners. Dinah Kilgore, Executive Director of the El Paso Central Appraisal District, and with me is Mr. David Stone, who's Assistant Chief Appraiser at the Appraisal District. We wanted to give you just a brief overview of how the summer went. We're still having hearings. We'll be having hearings for the rest of this week and possibly into next week, but we did certify on time and sent the appraisal roll to all of the taxing entities. Am I in charge of this? There we go. All right. I hope y'all can see this. I wanted to give you some numbers. Last year and this year, we've doubled our number of protests, and that is because of the market. And we all have heard and read everything about how the market is very hot and heavy in not just El Paso County, but in the state of Texas and in the United States. There's pretty much every state is having issues with high market values, and because we do have to appraise at 100% of market value, we saw some changes. Parcel count, as you can tell, for residential, that's your first line. Your residential properties are about 231,000, 232,000 parcels. When you're looking at your commercial parcels, you're only 11,630. So you can see residential is a huge, huge makeup for El Paso County. When you add in business personal property, that's just a little over 22,000. So between your multifamily, which is your apartments, your commercial, and your business personal property, residential still far exceeds the number of parcels that we have here in El Paso County. This is part of the appraisal roll that was sent to you for your tax roll. This is a breakdown by categories, and it gives you the count. It gives you the 2021 taxable value, and then shows you the 2022 for all the different categories within your county. That's something that you can look at at your leisure, especially if you want to fall asleep really fast, looking at numbers. This is a chart that I think is really important. This is the 2022 taxable value in El Paso County. As you can see in residential, we're at almost $34 billion in value in residential properties. If you add multifamily, which are your apartments, your commercial properties, and your business personal property value, that adds up to a little over $16 billion. So the bulk of the weight is on residential properties, which you can tell, when we had our protests this year, we doubled the number of protests this year and last year. We're normally around 19,000 plus or minus, and we were over 41,000, almost 42,000 last year and this year. Out of the 41,000 protests that we had, 56% of those protests were filed by what we say non-agent residential property owners. So those are your individual homeowners, your individual property owners, rental properties, things like that. About 9.5% of the appraisal roll was protested, which is not a bad number, but it was about 32% of the value was what was under protest. I will let you know, I'm going to turn it over to David to go over to him some historical data. Postcards were sent out in the mail. These postcards are sent to all property owners, and they have a website for them, property owners, to go into, and it's through the comptroller's office. And that website then directs them to all of the individual entities within a county so that they can see when the budget hearings are, when the date is posted for to have the hearing, who to contact. It has the basic information for your budget hearing process. That is something that was mandated by state law here a couple legislations ago, and the comptroller is now in charge of having all of, well, we have to have all that information, but the comptroller now is the website that's on the postcard. You click on there, put in your county, and it'll take you to all of the entities so that the public can see when they're having the rate hearings. David, I'll go ahead and let you.
Hi, David Stone, Assistant Chief Appraiser at the Appraisal District. We just want to point out a couple more things that happened this year. This is an abbreviation of the table that we usually put out every year that shows historically how much value the county loses from when the preliminary totals are issued on April 30th and when we certify on July 25th. As you can see, this year, in 2022, you lost 4.29% of the proposed value. We went from almost $57 billion to $54.5 billion. We lost about $2.4 billion. That's above the five-year average that we've had, but it's less than what happened last year. So although the five-year average is 3.81%, for the last three years, we've been over 4%. So the trend is to have a larger loss, but I think that's due to the fact that we're seeing larger gains. This next graph is showing you the historical taxable value, the total taxable value for the County of El Paso. As you can see, we had a big jump between 2021 and 2022, and that's due to the forces in the real estate market, and especially residential homes are going up. This next, the next graph shows a comparison of residential and commercial property. The upper line is residential only. These are market values, not taxable values. And you can see, we had a large increase in 2021, and we had an even bigger increase in 2022. Commercial property also saw an increase, but not as large of a percentage-wise.
Mr. Stone, if I can interrupt. In some of your other pages, you have other, what is other?
Other is like vacant land, agricultural land, the utilities like El Paso Electric, that kind of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Our next slide is showing new construction. As you can see, we had a huge increase in new construction this year. That was Amazon, basically, the new Amazon facility out on the east side. Our next slide is showing the number of protests. As Dinah said, we had 41,540 overall protests. 31,981 were residential, so we had a lot more residential protests this year, and that's because the values on the residential property went up so much this year.
I will follow up with Amazon. It wasn't just the Amazon. It was several apartment complexes and retail because of Amazon. So your east side growth is actually very large this year, and we will continue to probably see that with the businesses going in to support Amazon. Now, the market for 2021 and 2022 in residentially was very strong. It is still strong. Month of June, it did go down nationally a little bit in home sales. That was because of the increase in the interest rate. But we are still seeing it higher than June of last year, home selling. We're still seeing homes being on the market for a short period of time and selling for above listing. We're going to continue to watch that as we get closer to the end of the year, reminding everybody, we do appraise as of January 1. So we are watching the market. Next year will be another total reappraisal year, as long as the market is kind of volatile. I mean, it's very good if you're a seller, not so good if you're a buyer trying to find a place. But we're going to watch that market, and as it is adjusted upwards or downwards, we're going to follow suit. So for the next couple of years, you can expect a total reappraisal. Any questions from any of the board members?
Yes, Commissioner Holguin.
Thank you. The very first slide, or I guess the first slide after the title slide, continues to concern me, and I think we all agree, that just the huge discrepancy in the residential versus commercial, just, it really bothers me. And I understand that El Paso is not like other counties, where in other counties, they do have much more of a larger commercial base, and so the tax burden isn't so heavily placed on the residential properties. And this chart really just shows us how huge that discrepancy is. And I understand that it's much harder to appraise commercial, but the fact that it's more difficult shouldn't be the reason that we can't figure out a way to make it more equitable for our residential properties. So I don't know the answer to this question. I don't know, Commissioner Stout, through your position on the CAD board. I mean, is there something that we can do to start looking for ways to make the process fairer for our residential residents so that we can increase some of this commercial?
If I may answer that, Commissioner Stout. It is bringing businesses into the county that will help. Look at your parcel count. We have a very small amount of commercial properties here in El Paso County. It's very much a retirement community. It's very much a family community. We don't have the infrastructure in the way of businesses. At one point, we were very big in manufacturing, and of course, that all went with NAFTA went away. We are getting back bigger again in medical. We're seeing some big hospitals. So when you have a smaller percentage of actual commercial properties here, that does offset their contribution in the way of value. Commercial properties will protest every year. Commercial properties are allowed to protest. Commercial properties are giving abatements, 380 agreements, 381 agreements that we have to follow suit. We will put them at a market value, but then they're only taxed on whatever their abatement value is. So that does bring down some of the revenue on that. Business owners and property owners, residential owners, can file a lawsuit. You'll find that business owners file lawsuits more than individual property owners based on the value that the appraisal review board set. And that happens a lot. We've got about 1,400 lawsuits right now against the appraisal district that is allowed by law, and so we have to deal with those lawsuits. I will say that our largest contributors to El Paso County, the Marathon Refinery and Amazon, worked with us very well. The hospitals worked with us very well this year so that we could agree to a value, and they would sign off so there won't be any lawsuits on those. That is a big plus. Those are our biggest contributors in the way of property value, our highest property owners here in El Paso County. I know that's not an answer, Commissioner Holguin, but until we can bring in some businesses, Amazon's a beginning, and I'm hopefully, we'll see that as your economic departments work on bringing in some other.
Would it be helpful if we tried to get more resources to help defend against some of these lawsuits? I know in a prior presentation, you had spoken to us, or someone from your office had spoken to us, about the lawsuits that are filed and...
We're funded. It's just that there are so many, we're not considered high priority in the courts, so it takes a while to get through the process. That's going to be a legislative issue, to be honest with you, Commissioner Holguin, and Commissioner Stout can probably address that. Until the legislature puts some teeth in what an appraisal district can do in the way of litigation, there's not a lot we can do about that.
And then maybe we want to address that in our legislative agenda.
Yeah, I agree with your concerns. You know, if you look at that, you know, the situation, residential is up from $23.5 billion to $42 billion in nine years, while commercial is only up from $7 to $9 billion, or $9.4 billion, over that same amount of time. And so the situation that you're talking about, Commissioner Holguin, the balance between residential and commercial property has gotten worse. I mean, since I've gotten into office, between when I got into office and now, in the last eight years, it has gotten worse. And so I think another thing that we really need to talk about at the county and at the city and with other economic development-facing organizations or focused organizations is maybe what we've been doing over the last 10 or 12 years is not what's needed, and, you know, we really need to figure that out. I know that a lot of the promise of the downtown revitalization was to start seeing, you know, some change in that area, but it's not gotten better, it's gotten worse. I also wanted to bring up, you know, that one thing that also that confuses me a bit is that, you know, our malls are packed. You know, we always hear that El Paso is one of the most profitable places in the country for retail, certain chains, when, you know, producing sales tax and sales tax receipts. But I just wonder, you know, in that area, how is it possible that the commercial base is not showing growth or that we don't see increases in that area? And also wanted to ask, why did the CAD decide to reevaluate residential property two years in a row, just so the public knows, and has not done the same for commercial in the same time period?
We have reappraised commercial property.
Both?
Yes, sir.
In the last two, okay, in the last two years?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We reappraised commercial property every year. We looked at commercial property to see where they are. We run a ratio study and set a value at close to 100%. We're allowed to be 95 to 105%. Where we start losing value, of course, is during the protest process, that they utilize property tax agents that can represent thousands of properties and be able to take information. If we were to receive the information in advance, taxes being a nondisclosure, if we would receive information in advance, or if they were forced under state law to provide documentation, there's nothing in the tax code that says a commercial business has to provide us with information, even when they file a protest. Not until a lawsuit is filed that we can go in and request discovery. There is a method where we can subpoena records, which we've tried to subpoena records of certain retail properties, and that's been shut down by the courts. So we haven't been able to do that. So there are some loopholes that need, I think, need to be strengthened, but it's going to be legislatively. Everything we do is by state law, so if that's changed. One of the things that we've seen in El Paso County is we've seen a huge growth residentially, new homes, market value going up because of the high demand and low supply of homes. We've seen that market value going up. But if you look at who the major employers are in El Paso, they're government. So, of course, they're exempt, the university, the University of Texas, the community college, the different counties, city, you know, county, the school districts, some of the hospitals, UMC. So certain properties, certain owners, we may be seeing growth in population or growth in homes, but so much of our business here is in exempt status. So that is something that we'll see big growth in residential, but until we actually see new businesses. We're very excited about Amazon and what Amazon is bringing to that area. I don't know if y'all have driven out there lately. For years, it was just vacant dirt, and just overnight, as Amazon was being constructed, several new apartment complexes and several new retail went in. And so those, of course, will be picked up. We also have to remember that our assessment date is January 1. So if something starts after January 1, it's a year before we can put it on the roll, or if it's only percentage complete, then it'll be another year before we put it on at full value. So you will see some differences in that on your tax roll, because it may not be at the full market, but then the next year it would be. I know that doesn't answer all the questions, but...
I was just going to say, is it based on percentages as well? As a residential grows, then it seems like our commercial doesn't seem to keep up. So is it based on percentage when we discuss the differences?
Not on the appraisal roll. It's based on actual, what's there on January 1, yes. But Judge, that is a very good observation, that yes, that does happen.
Yeah, your residential just zooming, and we're trying to catch up. And a lot of things that we do here to, you know, get someone to come into our community as a business really is, what is it going to drive? Sort of Amazon driving other things and driving apartments and so forth, so...
And that's a perfect example of what it's driven around them.
Absolutely.
So in addition to some of the legislative changes that I think would be necessary, I think also here locally, it would be, I think it would help to maybe look at maybe the possibility of trying to beef up some of your abilities to defend against some of these lawsuits. It's just, you know, I understand commercial has the resources to file lawsuits and in the end can keep their taxes lower, and that's just, that's not fair to our residents who can't do the same thing and don't have the same resources. So maybe it would be a good idea to look at maybe beefing up some of your offices' capabilities to defend against those lawsuits and try to bring in more of the commercial dollars that way. So I don't know if that's a suggestion that can be made to the CAD board or how we could do that.
Well, I will, Commissioner Holguin, I will say, because of Commissioner Stout and some of our other members of the board, they did increase our litigation budget. So we have more monies to be able to contract expert reports and hire experts to come in and look after a suit has been filed. So, and then we've also beefed up working with companies prior to notices going out so that we can come to an agreement on a value, so that when you receive your preliminary roll, that's already a number that's basically been agreed to by both parties.
Wonderful. I'm glad to hear that. I think that's an excellent investment in those additional funds.
Okay, gentlemen and ladies, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. This is really very helpful, obviously, as we go toward the budget and see what some of the projections are, so we thank you for that.
Anytime you need us, we're here to tell you.
Timing was good.
Tell you what's what.
Thank you, Dinah. Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 7B, budget hearing. Receive a presentation and discuss and take appropriate action on the fiscal year 2022 through 2023 budgets and property tax rates for emergency service districts number one and number two.
Judge and Commissioners, Jessica Garzak and Budget and Fiscal Policy. As part of our budget process, the court receives the presentation and takes action from our ESDs on their budgets and proposed tax rates. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Chief Menendez from ESD number one and Chief Esparza from ESD number two. I believe we have number ones up.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Chief.
Chris Menendez, Fire Chief for El Paso County, ESD number one. To my side, I have Administrator Mrs. Catherine Ames. So today, we're going to discuss the budget for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 for El Paso County Emergency Services District number one. Some of the ESD highlights we've had is we increased our staffing for the Fire Marshal Office to include an additional two peace officers. 2017 to 2022, the CAD statistics indicated an increase of properties of about 186,000 properties. So you can see it kind of correlates with the presentation that CAD just presented to the court. Staffing two stations with an increase of firefighters. Initially last year, we were at two. Now we're staffing at three firefighters per station, providing 24/7 coverage. And so with that, that allows us for safer response, having more firefighters available for fire responses when they are needed. Also started building a design, or should I say designing, the ESD administrative building. We are just now in the preliminary phases and talking with the architect, and so in the next couple of months, we hope to see some movement with the architects and then have vertical construction next year in 2023. A three- to five-year strategic plan. Number one would be adding paid staff, looking at a 48-hour shift, which would cover, you know, the six-day staff by paid firefighters.
So today, we're gonna discuss the, uh, budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three for El Paso County Emergency Services District number one. Some of the E S D highlights we've had is, uh, we increased our staffing for the Fire Marshal Office, uh, to, to include an additional two peace officers. Two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two, uh, the CAD statistics indicated an increase of properties of about a hundred and eighty-five, a hundred and eighty-six thousand properties. So you can see it kind of correlates with the presentation that, uh, CAD, uh, just presented to the court. Staffing two stations with an increase of firefighters. Initially last year, we were at two. Now we're staffing at three firefighters per station, providing a twenty-four-seven coverage. And so with that, that allows us for, uh, safer response, having more firefighters available for, uh, fire responses, uh, when they are needed. Uh, also started building a design, or should I say designing the, uh, E S D administrative building. Uh, we are just now in the preliminary phases and talking with the architect. And so, uh, in the next couple of months, uh, we hope to see, um, some movement with the architects and then have vertical construction next year in twenty twenty-three. The three to five-year strategic plan, uh, number one will be, uh, adding paid staff, looking at a forty-eight-hour shift, uh, which will cover, you know, the six-day staff by paid firefighters starting in January of twenty twenty-three. That will allow us to have eight firefighters, uh, fully paid. We will still remain a combination department. Uh, this will be just the first phase of three to become a fully staffed, uh, fully paid department, at which point we will still keep the, uh, the volunteers, because there's no greater pool to pull from than those who are volunteering with us and, um, and retrieve, receiving that training. Uh, aerial apparatus, estimated delivery of February of twenty twenty-three, with all the growth that's occurring in our district, uh, we have seen that, uh, we are, uh, we have a need for an additional aerial, uh, this, in this case, is a tiller that allows for maneuverability through Amazon and through all the additional, uh, commercial properties that are, um, coming into the East Lake area. And so this, uh, particular apparatus will allow us, uh, to, um, provide a better service and also assist us with I S O. And if you're familiar with I S O, um, I S O, uh, grades you based on apparatus, manpower, response, there's a number of different variables. And so our goal is to ultimately go from a I S O rating of two to an I S O rating of one, just like the City of El Paso is currently. Uh, new F M O and Q R Vs, uh, estimated, uh, to be delivered in fall. Q R V is a quick response vehicle. F M O is a Fire Marshal's Office. We're adding personnel to the Fire Marshal's Office as we have seen an increase in the, uh, demand for permits for operations and for construction, kind of going again hand in hand with, uh, what CAD had this discussed a little while ago. Uh, the E S D administrative building, uh, to commence vertical construction in December of twenty twenty-three. This building would be not only an admin building to house the Fire Marshal's Office, but would also be used for logistics and for fleet services. We're finding that our trucks, as they age, are going out more to, um, get repairs, and so we see a cost savings by doing that internally or keeping it in-house versus going out, uh, to the surrounding, uh, businesses for repair. Operational construction permits, uh, from two thousand seventeen to current two thousand twenty, they've almost, uh, gone up a triple, uh, projected to be, uh, calendar year at eight hundred and twenty-four. And so you can see just the numbers, how, uh, they have increased and we project them to keep on increasing, again, uh, based off of what CAD has presented, uh, to us. Some of the district growths on the left, you'll see Amazon, what it was about a year and a half ago. On the right, what East Lake is, uh, currently with all the, uh, commercial properties that are coming in, and that we have a multitude of additional properties coming in, uh, coming soon to include Albertson's. We have additional, uh, apartment complexes, uh, Union Drafthouse, Julio's, Dunkin' Donuts, Frito-Lay warehouses, uh, businesses that have opened up already, uh, of course, Amazon, Dutch Brothers, Kentucky Fried Chicken, uh, Starbucks. And so the, the boom is happening and it's happening on East Lake. And so, um, there is commercial properties coming in. There's a lot more that are pending, uh, also some big boxes that have not been announced yet, but will be coming soon. Some of the Fire Department highlights, we had a decreased alarm to arrival response time, which is very significant. What that means is from the time the alarm sounds to the time our firefighters get to the front door, um, we have achieved the, uh, been able to go below the national standard of eight minutes, or roughly about seven minutes and thirty-two seconds. And so that was pretty significant. Um, again, as the community grows, as the district grows, um, so does, um, the response times. And so, uh, you'll see in another slide here shortly, uh, how it went up above eight minutes and how we combat that, uh, to reduce it below the eight-minute threshold. Uh, we increased our number of E M Ts, uh, from forty-three to forty-three, making it seventy-three percent of our personnel medically certified. This was possible by partnering with Border Patrol. Border Patrol had, uh, classes that were at no cost to us, and we trained eight members, uh, to get us up to these numbers. Eighty percent of our members hold an S F F A introductory certification or higher to include T C F P. And so this is important as this allows, uh, well-trained firefighters to respond, um, safely and then ultimately, uh, for, uh, property conservation, that their tactics are, 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 are set and they know, uh, what needs to be done. Station two providing responses to thirty-three percent of all the responses, uh, with the addition of station two, which occurred about a year and a half ago. That's what kind of helped us reduce our response times to the area. Um, also, if you noticed that, that means sixty-six percent of the calls are still being handled by station number one. And so our strategic plan calls for in the future to account for a possible station three and station four to keep up with the demand that is happening in our district. Uh, observed a decrease in volunteerism. Uh, to combat this challenge, we, uh, budgeted, uh, for the paid, uh, firefighters full-time, uh, eight firefighters that would work a forty-eight-hour shift with ninety-six hours off in between. For county search and rescue, which includes water rescue, there were send, uh, ten SAR activations or search and rescue activations, five of which were water rescue or recovery, uh, five of which were search for lost persons, were, which were ironically not on the mountains this, this year, but in open land and open desert areas. We did have twelve, uh, Fire Department drone callouts, uh, to assist if agencies of law enforcement from looking for, uh, missing subjects, uh, missing persons in a desert area, and also for, um, evidence, um, uh, pictures when they had some major incidents occur in the county. Uh, training, we are trained with, uh, area agencies to include Border Patrol, Customs, Etchiguas, and Great Oaks. Uh, currently, we have thirty-six, uh, search and rescue members, uh, from the county, uh, that includes all the Fire Departments within the county area and includes, also includes sheriffs, Texas Parks, Wildlife, and then our newest agency that joined, that is law enforcement, Horizon P D. The law enforcement side of it now caps us at fifteen, allowing the additional, uh, members on the fireside, uh, to encompass, uh, the search and rescue team. Fixed your call volume. Currently, we're projected to hit four thousand three hundred and fifty-nine calls this year, and mind you, this is fiscal year, not calendar year. And compared to the last year, we are a little bit above four thousand. So there is an increase in calls as we go every year. And so this increased call volume also kind of inhibits us in regards to response times, and so the numbers change as the, the call volume increases. And so, uh, projected, you'll see in a slide here shortly, uh, what we'll project by two thousand thirty-one. The fire breakdown, brush fires, fifty percent, uh, which accounted for most of our fires this year. And mind you, they weren't, uh, small fires with, uh, the, the lack of rain. We did have some significant fires that involved, uh, additional, uh, units and additional, uh, departments for assistance, and so that was a pretty significant. Uh, twenty-eight percent of those were, uh, structured fires of the a hundred and eighty-five total. Uh, vehicle fires accounted for thirteen percent, brush fires nine percent, and then all other fires, there was nothing to count for there, which was at zero percent, because all the fires were classified accordingly. One-year trend forecast, as I mentioned, we're at four thousand three hundred and fifty-nine, uh, projected for the fiscal year. Projected by twenty thirty-three, we're gonna be around seven thousand two hundred and fifty-two. My assistant chief who projects this has been off by about one percent, and so he's been doing a phenomenal job in, in forecasting, and so we stand firm on these numbers here. If we maintain our current trend with population and growth, that by twenty thirty-three, we'll be at seven thousand plus calls per year. And so because of that, we're planning for additional stations. We're planning for additional personnel. We're planning for additional apparatuses and, um, also the buildings, of course. Alarm to arrival time in two thousand seventeen, five years ago, we were sub-eight minutes. We're at seven minutes thirteen seconds. As the years went on and the district grew, we went up to as high as eight minutes twenty-three seconds, and the national average again is eight minutes. So what do we do to combat that? We added a station number two, which in, uh, twenty twenty-one allowed us to get below the eight-minute threshold, to get us at seven minutes and thirty-two seconds, keeping us within the, uh, national average or below the national average, um, that is out there, um, in the, in the, in the nation. Here, I will pass, uh, this, the, the remaining, uh, slides to our Administrator, Mrs. Catherine Ames.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, um, the chief talked about our why, what we are, um, planning for the future, what we've done currently, and so I'm gonna talk about how we're gonna fund all of those projects. So under a budget breakdown, this tells you where, where's our budget going? So our number one right now is at twenty-nine percent, and that's gonna be our liability and interest at two million seven ninety-four. Um, the second highest is payroll and salaries at twenty-one percent, or two million. The next one is professional services at sixteen percent, which is one million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And then we have capital improvements, which is twelve percent of our budget at one million one hundred and eighty-one thousand. Then we have our general expense category at seven percent, which is six hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And then we have, um, at four percent, we have two categories, one being insurance at three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and collection, dispatch, and radio usage fees at, um, again, at four percent for three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Then we have at three percent, the repair and maintenance portion, which is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And then, um, uh, least but not last is our two percent, which is our equipment portion at a hundred and eighty-one thousand, and F D supplies at a hundred and ninety-two thousand. So that basically shows what the breakdown of, um, the budget is. So I'm gonna speak a little more specifically about each category.
Just a second, just, um.
Yes, sir.
Could, for purposes, uh, you know, typically you, you find payroll and salaries being the highest, but, uh, your liability and interest, could you explain that a little bit? Because that's really a high number.
Sure, um, I can go into it in more detail in the future slides, or I can discuss it. Is that okay?
No, if you're gonna go into it, it just, uh.
Sure, no, I understand. Thank you, Judge. So El Paso County E S D number one's Board of Commissioners will be voting on a budget of nine million five hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-nine cents on August the eighth for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. So note that our, our board has not approved a tax rate or the budget at this point. While we've had budget workshops, this is, um, we're presenting based on, uh, their not approval, um, currently. This is an increase of four million eight hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, or a hundred and one point eight one percent over last fiscal year. And so I'd like to talk a little more in each category where that money is coming from. So in our general expense category, um, the increase did go, um, by thirty-five point three-five percent, or a hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And a lot of this has to do with us adding those paid firefighters. Again, that changes categories along the entire budget, right? So, um, we have to pay for more certifications, more training, more uniforms, those types of things. Also, I'm sure you all have been hit with the same, um, situation we have with fuel costs. The cost of fuel, um, we had to reallocate money towards it this year. We're really beefing it up next year, one, because our call volume is increasing and because we're, the fuel market is still very unstable. Um, we are also increasing the funding in this area because the chief, um, feels, um, passionate about community outreach programs, so we want to institute more of those, um, in this, um, next fiscal year. Now payroll and salaries, um, Judge, what your question was is, this category did increase by eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars, or sixty-nine point seven-five percent. And so a good majority of what it is, is what the chief was mentioning. So when we had our sales tax election, we presented, when we went to the community and we told them why we needed sales tax, we ran on three basic principles. One is paid firefighters, one is firefighter equipment, and one is facilities. So in the payroll and salaries, we're coming true to our word with, um, increased staffing. So right now, we have twelve current employees. That includes the chief, myself, our admin, um, two administrative assistants, an infection control nurse, and of course, our Fire Marshal, uh, office staff. We are looking to add four part-time officers and eight full-time career firefighters. So next year, we will go from twelve employees to twenty-four employees. And again, as the chief had mentioned, we're looking to staff one forty-eight-hour shift. This is in combination with our volunteer fire department. So we're, our volunteer fire department will continue to get paid a stipend. We could take some money from that category to pay for the paid firefighters. But again, this is what we promised our constituents, and this is what we'll, we're going forward with. The other thing that we increased in this area is our T C D R S. Um, you all are also in the same retirement system. Currently, we have our employees at a two hundred and twenty-five percent employer contribution. Um, the board feels certain that we need to be on par with the other members in our county who are in T C D R S, so that, um, our employees receive the same benefit. And so we are looking to increase our T C D R S employee contribu-, employer contribution to two hundred and fifty percent for this current year. And of course, as you know, that's the max match. Our volunteer, our, I'm sorry, our employees are also at the max, um, match of seven percent. Okay? So the next category is insurances. This one did raise by eighty thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars, or thirty-one point two-eight percent. Um, this is due to proposed costs that our insurance carrier has given us, as well as additional vehicles on the policy the chief spoke about, a few new vehicles that we'll be adding. And also, um, of course, as you hire more firefighters, you have to pay more health insurance, um, life insurance, and of course, workers' comp. Um, I'm not sure if you're familiar in the workers' comp area for volunteer firefighters. We have to claim that at twenty-five dollars an hour. So every volunteer, the hour they have, it costs us twenty-five dollars an hour in workers' comp. So this category is always a large category. But again, um, we're happy to do it because we want our employees to, to feel that they're, um, supported if, in time of injury. Under liability and interest, this is the other area that, um, Judge Salminago asked about. So this category did increase by one million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, or a hundred and thirty-one point eight-six percent change. So we've been working very feverishly with our, um, financial firm that we use to, um, to take out our loans for, um, debt service. And so we're very, um, cognizant of the increase of, um, interest rates. So what we were trying, what we are doing is setting ourselves up financially so that our loans will be staggered over the next few years. One, to make it palatable for this current year, and also to make it palatable for the future years to come. Um, we're also looking at, this year, we're going, we have a pumper that, it won't be paid off for two years, but we're paying it off, we're making two payments this year because, um, I'm not sure if the chief mentioned, in the next fiscal year, we'll be bringing on a new pumper, which is another liability payment. So we're hoping to do a, an exchange of that. Also, in addition, we have this aerial apparatus coming on, and so we're making, um, a larger payment on the aerial apparatus and a larger beginning payment on the new E S D administration loan, just so that, um, while we have the money from the additional sales tax to, um, help mediate that municipal, uh, the operating budget, um, so that's where we've done that compromise. So that is where the liability and interest has increased. We're at about five cents for entry, for liability right now in our, on our property tax portion. Um, we've discussed this with the, our Board of Commissioners. They understand the need, equipment, buildings is gonna be, is, is what we're gonna need for the future, for our strategic plan. And again, that's where too, that sales tax money that will, I'll discuss a little bit more, um, in the presentation is, is going to take over those operating costs so that we can use our tax rate for that liability portion. Judge, did that answer any questions?
It does.
Okay, perfect. Um, under the equipment portion, our equipment, uh, section increased by four million four hundred and sixty-five thousand, which was a two-point-five-three percent change, not a significant change. And we equa-, uh, um, we equate this to our highly successful equipment replacement program. The chief has done a great job in making sure that all of our equipment is up to standard. So every year, we do some type of replacement, um, we do a lot of repair and maintenance, so that really helps in, um, mediating those costs. So under repair and maintenance category, um, this is increased by only four thousand one hundred and eleven dollars, or one point four-nine percent change. And again, this is for apparatuses and facility, um, maintenance. Again, we continue to do a great job of continued maintenance on those buildings, preventative type things, and so that, um, al- also helps keep our repair and maintenance costs, um, low. So under our collection and dispatch radio usage fee, this category did increase by a hundred and sixteen thousand, or forty-eight point two-nine percent. And we did see a few, uh, slight change in our CAD fees, but mostly it's about our dispatching services. I'm sure most of you may be aware, but we use Horizon Police Department for dispatching. And so the chief and our Board of Commissioners, um, receive a monthly report from our communications partner with, um, Horizon P D, and have noticed that, um, we only pay for two-point-two-five dispatchers. And so the need, our call volume is going up, the amount of radio time, those types of things have increased, so they are being proactive in raising the amount of dispatchers that will be assigned to Horizon, um, Fire Department and the E S D to three-point-seven-five. And in addition, this is a contract that we have with Horizon P D, and so they're also be go-, they'll also be giving a cost of living raise to their dispatchers. Okay? Under professional services, this category also increased by one million one hundred and thirty-three thousand, which is a two hundred and sixty-seven point three-eight percent change. So in this category, the mo-, the, the biggest change is our architect. So we budgeted to pay for the architect for the administration building one hundred percent in this, um, in this budget year. This is our projected cost. As, um, the chief mentioned, we're still in the R F Q process. We're actually doing interviews on Wednesday, and the board hopefully will, um, have a selection on Thursday of the architect for this facility. So I do want to say that that's a one-time cost, um, in this section. Okay? So in our Fire Department Supplies, um, category, this one only increased by forty-seven thousand dollars, or thirty-two point five-nine percent. Um, the projected increase mostly is regarding calls, medical calls, fire calls, those types of things need for additional supplies, um, and these are consumable supplies. So we've also increased our uniform budget, as I discussed earlier, is when you bring on paid. on paid staff, there comes more things, right? You have to, you have to outfit them in something to wear, so that's part of the supplies that have increased. And then in our final category, which is capital improvements, and some of the capital improvements are one-time purchases, and some of them are rotating, like I spoke about how some of those other categories were low because we have this really great program where we replace and those types of things. So in our capital improvements, it did increase by $839,000 or 246%. And most of it encompasses first responder safety, patient care equipment, and additional replacement of fire apparatuses. So we are purchasing all the equipment through the budget for the new aerial apparatus. Those, those vehicles don't come with equipment, we have to outfit those. We're also replacing some of our other equipment with newer technology, which helps our firefighters be more effective. And then also PPE, which is the gear that they wear, we do a replacement program as well, and additional PPE for those new folks that we're bringing on. We also bring, believe that communications is a major role, so we're buying more radios, MCTs, which are the mobile communication terminals that they use in the vehicles. So those are some of the things that we're looking at for capital improvements. I'm going to go to our final slide, and this is really our budget recap. The commissioners on Thursday are having a board meeting to discuss, to propose an increase in tax rate to 10 cents. So it, it is an increase, but it isn't an increase, right? Because right now, we're at 10 cents, and do remember that ESDs are capped at 10 cents. That's the highest tax rate that we can have. And so we are currently at 10 cents. They're proposing again another 10-cent tax rate for this future year, which would give us an INS tax rate of .055792 and an MNO tax rate of .044208. So let me talk a little bit about where the money is coming from for this budget. So in property tax collection at that 10-cent rate, we are looking at $4,976,382. And I want to touch on that, exactly what CAD mentioned was, is that we are now seeing the property money from properties that we have been responding to for the past one and a half to two years. So our property tax did, the amount of money that we'll be collecting did increase, but because finally, the funds are catching up to what we were already responding to and what we were already doing in our district. So as you know, we, we're successful at our sales tax election, more successful than we had considered. We had only budgeted $500,000 for the '22 fiscal year, and we, we have collected much more than that. So what we're doing is, we are pushing forward $1,711,1850 from our current fiscal year because we did not budget for it this year to the next fiscal year. And a good portion of that is going towards those one-time costs that I mentioned, that architect fee, and also some of those capital improvements. In FY '23, in a modest collection model, we believe we'll collect $2,855,299. We have a company that we use, who provide, who gives us a forecast, tells us what the average is and the of increase in sales tax, those types of things. So this is again, a very conservative amount. So this gives us, when you add all those up together, our budgeted amount of $9,543,531.49, again, an increase of 101.81%. I do want to mention this, though, is for the first time in over seven years, have we not had to use reserve to balance our budget? So we're very pleased with that. I think Mr. Hargrove had mentioned in several, several other budget hearings is, if you continue to take from your reserve, that's not a good way to do business. We are now in the stance with the, with the sales tax and the additional property tax, we are now in the stance where we do not have to use reserve money to balance our budget. In fact, what we have done this year, we took $200,000 from last year's sales tax collection, or I guess what you'd call our current year, and we're taking $200,000 from next year and putting that into our reserve account. But what we're calling that is, it's really encumbered for overpayment claims. I don't, I'm sure you all are familiar that sometimes taxpayers pay and they really wasn't meant for you, and you might have to pay over. We've already identified a few of those in our district. And so the dis, the ESD is putting ourself in a stance where we would have that money in reserve in case we have overpayment that we have to pay. Because obviously, that would be a breaker to our budget, and so we're really preparing for that. So with that being said, we project our reserve balance to be $1,153,379, which is only 17% of our operating budget. So again, our budget rationale, the three things that we ran our sales tax election on is paid firefighters, new equipment, and new facilities, and that's what we are giving to our community for this budget year. I'm happy to accept any questions.
Thank you. Wally, I saw you came up. Are you with us here?
I am, Judge. Thank you.
Could you, you've always sort of put things in perspective for us, and if you could help us out with that?
Certainly. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. I will back up a little bit, Judge, on your question. That was a great question on the percentage for liabilities and insurance. Their liabilities is really made up also predominantly of their payments that they're making on their debt outstanding, and that debt outstanding, we have it in a separate fund. So when you look at our general fund compared to their total fund, that's why you see the variance so much as well. Catherine wouldn't have known that, so that was more of a county answer. But overall, Judge, the addition of the second station, the big significant amount for sales taxes is allowing the district to not have a reliance on that fund balance, and that's really phenomenal, to not have to have that reliance, because their fund balance, if you'll track the history of it, was going down, and they were making a pretty rapid consumption of that. So the sales tax boom that they're seeing out there in their district really will help them plan for the future, do equipment replacements, retire debt, and look at that feasibility of the addition of a, of a third station. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my staff for the last few months of picking up and attending those meetings and keeping me abreast of what's going on, but it appears to be a real solid budget this year, Judge.
Thank you. Always respect your opinion, Wally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions at this time? No?
Thank you. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
If I could just make a really quick comment, Judge. I just wanted to thank the chief and let him know that Catherine was very, very helpful and gracious to us. Over the weekend, we held one of our UMC bond community meetings at your station there off of Darrington, and it's a beautiful building, and Catherine was just very, very hospitable. Thank you all again, and my thanks also to Commissioner Mayberry, who was there with us as well. I think we had a very, very full house, many more people than we expected, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank Catherine for her efforts.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. How you all doing? Commissioners, as you all know, El Paso County ESC number two covers roughly 500 square miles. We do have 13 facilities within those 500 square miles of the county. We do have six volunteer fire departments that we sustain. Roughly right now, we have about 135, 150 volunteers within our district, 32 paid employees. It's a little bit different from the last ESD that you all heard. Our funding is differently. We are seeing some growth. We are going to be hopefully getting some additional funding from that growth, but it's going to take a couple of years, just like the CAD said, and we're scheduled to, to see a little bit of increase. So we'll go over the numbers just like we did earlier. I'm going to touch up a little bit on the completed forecasted special projects. We did paint our San Sadio Station inside and outside. The Clint Station number three also got a remodel. We placed a new siding on the Torneo Fire Station, of course, out there being in the, in the heat, it wears and tears on our building, so we have to do upkeep. We are planning to, we did demolish Clint's Fire Station number two and built a new one. For those of you that were able to see it, that was a beautiful station. Our new boardroom finally at the district was finished, and we're still looking forward to having you there to hold a meeting. We purchased 200 SEBA again to be able to keep up with the times. We're supposed to upgrade equipment every, every so often, so this would put us right around the eight-year, 10-year mark for us to be able to, to keep up with the, with the demand of the fire gear. And we have, well, we purchased also 30 new vehicles to replace roughly, we have 150 vehicles in our fleet. So this is the upkeep of those vehicles so that we don't have to spend money for the upkeep. Now, we're currently working on completing the next special project, which is Montana Vista Station Two, is looking to be online. If you recall during the COVID vaccinations, that was one of the stations that we used, and it was not equipped for services as restrooms, offices, or something that we needed. So that was equipped this year, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we should be seeing it go online. We also had to redo our roof at West Valley Station, and then our kitchen remodel also at West Valley. Operation and construction permits, as you can all see, we give you a five-year outlook. We've gone from 218 in 2017 to 201 currently for this fiscal year. So we're, we are seeing a growth, and I broke it, we broke it down, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask me.
Chief, you mentioned you're seeing a growth. Can you go back to that? From 2017 to 2022, can you go over that? You, you mentioned a growth, but the, your slide indicates.
Yes, because this is, this is for, from January to December instead of from fiscal year, like we, we normally do. So that's why you haven't seen, because we're, we're early in, in August.
So that last one is not up to date?
The last one is just to current.
Okay.
But we are seeing, we're scheduled to be seeing hopefully 1,000 to 2,000 new homes in the Montana Vista area, as you're aware, Commissioner. And then we're also seeing a lot of new warehousing that's coming down in the Socorro area, south of East Lake, Nuevo Weko Tanks Road. So there's going to be a lot of warehousing. Again, we won't see any of that revenue for two to three years when those projects are completed, and that might offset a little bit of what we're looking for in funding. But yes, you'll see, next year, we'll give you the, the total tally number of permits that are coming in. The growth that we're seeing is the El Paso Logistics Buildings A and B, Planet Fitness, Stone Lake, East Lake Building Six, Southwest Pecan Warehouse, Taco Bell, Tamara Immigrant Project. So just in Montana Vista, we, we are having inquiries on building more, I'm going to say detention centers, but halfway homes for the immigrant children. So that's one of them that was just completed, and there's another one already in the works. We're also getting Wendy's, Wing Daddies, and many more restaurants that are coming that are still in the planning phases for that area. The fire department highlights, of course, the 30 new vehicles that were distributed, seven to the district office, three to Clint, Fabians received two, Montana Vista received seven, San Sadio received three, Socorro three, and West Valley five. We still have a couple of vehicles that have not been assigned. Total 153 volunteers, 134 of them are EMT. Search and Rescue Team, we have 15 that are part of the county's rescue team, and Swift Water Rescue, we have 16. We're currently looking to send another six to get trained so that we can augment those numbers. And of course, we have, we gave a breakdown of the air packs that we just purchased, and we're currently replacing the, the rest of the equipment. Overall, the 911 overview per calendar year from 2017 to 2022, as you can see also, we're, we're seeing a growth. 2017, we had a total 7,216. We're currently at 5,328. And you can see the year increase, every year it increases. And of course, we saw that our, during our COVID time, it went up a little bit higher than normal. So we're also preparing, we're looking at keeping an eye on these monkey pox to make sure that we, we're aware of what's happening in our community. We haven't had any one yet, but we're, we're keeping an eye on it. Fire breakdown, as you can see, we broke it down by brush fires, rubbish fires, structure fires, and vehicle fires. Of course, 2017, you saw 153 brush fires versus right now, 127. And this is not only during 4th of July, this is trash fires, the people starting their own homes, and it becomes into a brush fire. So we have to do an upkeep on those. Rubbish fires, 152 in 2017 to 81 now. Structure fires, 143 in 2017, we currently are at 74. And vehicle fires, 64, and we're at 53 currently this, this year. Any questions, Commissioners?
Go ahead, Chief.
Per calendar year forecasting 2023, we should be hitting in 2023 12,000 calls. Of course, you see from 2017 to 7,216 calls that we did, we're currently at 5,328. With the growth that we're going to see, we should be hitting that number. We were already, last year, we were at the 10,000 mark, so we should be hitting that, that mark at 12,000 for, for 2023. Door-to-door response time overview, of course, 2017, we had a seven-minute and 59-second response time, and we're now at 7:55. Of course, it could be a little bit greater, but we said that we need to get a couple more staff, and we currently are trying to, to lower that number. Well, we'd need another 39 additional employees. I'll hand over to Mariana, which is to my left, and she will go over the budget.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Mariana Navarrete, ESC number two. Here in this slide, we're going to present the ESD budget breakdown for next fiscal year '22-23, and starting off with payroll and salaries at 2.4 million or 26%. Professional fees, 932,000 or 10%. Building, vehicle, and equipment repairs, 412,504%. Capital improvements, 1.9 million or 20%. Fuel, 240,003%. FD supplies, which includes fire, medical, and office supplies, 210,002%. General expenses, 333,003%. Liability and interest, 1.8 million, 20%. Training and certifications, 92,730,1%. Furniture and equipment, 88,401% as well. Uniforms, 97,301%. And dues and subscriptions at 74,101%. Our ESD board adopted our budget for fiscal year '22-23 on August 29th, and our overall budget approved was $9.9 million. This is an increase of $4,210 or 0.04% over the '21-22 fiscal year budget. Now, we'll discuss some of the categories next, Commissioners. This general expense, this category increased by $41,990, a 14% change. The rise in, the rise in cost in this category is related to price increases. Also included in the general expenses is our cell phones, internet, telephone, and fax. Our amount of budget is mostly payroll and salaries, it's 26% of our budget, and this year, this category increased by $365,108 and 18%, 18% change, excuse me. A small pay raise has been budgeted for the firefighters and all the ESD staff. Also included in this item is the cost for payroll taxes and our TCDRS pension contribution, which we are also at the 250% match, and our employees are at a 7%. And also included in the payroll and salaries, Commissioners, our board approved a longevity pay for our staff this current fiscal year, and that is also included, and that, and therefore there's an increase in it. Our insurances, as Catherine mentioned, our workers' comp insurance is the most expensive. It goes, it keeps increasing every year. This did increase by $119,744, a 19% change. And we did it based on the current premiums, and our provider did recommend a 10%, 10% increase be added. Our liability and interest, this year, we actually paid a loan of $324,000, which therefore decreased our liability and insurance for next fiscal year, which is a 15% change. Equipment, this category increased by $5,400, a 7% change. This budget category includes furniture and equipment. We are, as you, Chief, mentioned, we are working on new projects at the Montana Vista Fire Station. So we are, we did budget to furnish those departments once they, the projects are completed. Also, some of our departments requested new computers. They have outdated computers that are eight-plus years, so we are trying to do additional funding for those new computers. They have outdated computers that are eight-plus years, so we are trying to um do additional funding for those new computers. Our building and vehicle equipment repair and maintenance category increased by 39,000, an 11% cha-change. Also, as you all know, the price increases in the market has caused for a increase in this category. Our fuel, we've also had to allocate funds from our, our budget to cover for fuel cost. And as Chief mentioned, we have about 150 vehicles. So our car, uh, car volume, also due to COVID, has increased, so our fuel did increase by a 63, 63% change. Professional services, this category increased by $120,822, a 15% change. This budget category increased due to the MOU. As Catherine mentioned, we also have an MOU with the Horizon Police Department, and they are having increases for their staff and also insurance cost. Next is our fire department supplies, that increased by 21,000, an 11% change. The increase in this category is due to um as well, market um increases. This includes firefighting supplies, medicals, and office supplies. Capital improvements, this category decreased um by 286,437, a 13% change. This budget year, the capital improvement encompasses a new fire station for Fabens Fire Department, roof repair for the San Elisario Station, remodel the front of the Socorro Fire Station, asphalt and concrete replacement, and exterior paint for the West Valley Station. This will also include replacement of an old fuel pump and a new lift sewer station at our headquarters office. We will accomplish this by the end of fiscal year 22, 23, except for the new fire station at the Fabens. Approximate completion fiscal year 23, 24. So our whole budget total for this next fiscal, fiscal year 22, 23 is $9.9 million, a 4% increase from fiscal year 21, 22. We will be holding a meeting tomorrow evening to propose the tax rate of .09358, which consists of that uh debt rate of .036476 and our maintenance and operating rate of .057104. Our reserve balance amount at um budgeted, actually, our reserve balance amount estimated at the end of this fiscal year is $4.3 million or 71% of our operating budget. Budget rationale, with the current economic situation, this fiscal year 2023 increases are due to salaries, benefits, insurance, and professional services. Also, the cost of product and services. Questions, Commissioners?
Questions? Uh, Commissioner Oggin?
Mariana, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure I understood. So the Board has already, or they have not already, they have?
They adopted the budget on the 29th.
Of?
July, just, just a week ago, about a week, yeah.
Okay, cuz I thought I heard you say August, and I thought-
I'm sorry, no. And we're holding a meeting tomorrow for the proposed tax rate.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? No?
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you both.
Judge, Commissioners, just to clarify, so you will not um take action today? We will bring these items back on the 22nd after both of their Boards have adopted the tax rates and the budgets, if they haven't already. And then um you all will act on them on the 22nd. If you have any questions in the meantime, you can feel free to reach out to either ESDs or to us, and we will be glad to work with them as well to bring back any information.
Wally, any additional comments, uh, as you did for the ESD Number One?
No, sir. Uh, Ms. Keller just stole the, the date drop for you on the 22nd. But similar to ESD One, uh, our team has worked closely with the staff of ESD Two, and we're very thankful for that interaction we've had. And um they two have got a, a solid budget put together. And uh, the reason you see such a difference, I will add this on, in fund balance for ESD Two that you don't see in ESD One. CSD Two has had a sales tax for a number of years in place that's allowed them to, to build up a, a reserve balance. And I suspect that over, over time, you'll see some, something similar take place in ESD One. That's it, Judge.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Great presentation, thank you.
We'll take no action for item 7B. Item number eight, County Administration, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the county's participation in the Town of Horizon City reinvestment, reinvestment zone number one upon final review and approval by County Attorney's Office. Contract number 2022-0439.
Welcome, Jose, thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Jose Landeros with County Administration. Happy to be able to present to you this final participation agreement with uh the Town of Horizon City. Uh, as you all know, we have been working very closely with uh their staff and legal uh office to make sure that we hammered out a few critical details within the participation agreement. Happy to be able to let you know that we've reached, uh, we've reached a point where we feel we've met the, the direction that the Court has provided us. You can see here that this agreement ensures that the county's participation uh is increased from what was initially proposed. In addition, there's a few uh considerations with respect to the monitoring that the Court and the county will have over the course of the 30 years. This agreement does ensure that, once our estimated payment is reached, that the Court has the opportunity to uh decide to terminate the agreement at that point, uh, 30 years from now or 20 years from now, whenever that date may arrive, or continue to participate. And that's a, that's a decision that the Court in the future will have to, uh, to make. But we do feel that this is a great opportunity to partner with uh municipality to really provide for a solution that uh has plagued not only Horizon City, but the county at large with respect to the uh paper plats and the undeveloped areas. Uh, so we are uh glad to be able to offer this agreement to the Court this morning with our recommendation for approval. Uh, happy to take any questions that the Court may have. I also believe that Dr. Terry Casada with the Town is available to answer any questions, or might want to address the Court directly as well.
Uh, who, who's available, Jose?
Dr. Terry Casada with Horizon City.
Dr. Casada, thank you. Uh, just any additional comments that you might wanna add?
Uh, good morning, Commissioners, Court. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. Um, Alderman Miller, who has also been participating in, in these discussions and provided guidance to Horizon is um, sends his regrets. He is out of town and is unable to join us. But uh, let me thank all of the, the county staff for their work on this. Um, as Mr. Landeros indicated, this is a problem that has plagued Horizon City, and, and we know that it is, uh, exists in other parts of the county as well. And we believe that this partnership is going to be very fruitful and will be beneficial to our mutual constituents. So, subject to your questions, we are, we're grateful to you and to Mr. Landeros and the legal staff uh at the county for working with us on this agreement.
Well, thank you, and thank you for, I know, uh, Alderman Miller's been really, really active, and thank you for working with Jose. And I know we've gone back and forth a little bit, but uh I think we're at a much better place. So let me ask if there's any questions. Uh, Commissioner Oggin?
Not a question, Judge, but I just wanted to mention um that I did get an opportunity to speak to Alderman Miller on Thursday, just to make sure um that um the concerns that the county had um were able to be worked out with the city of Horizon. And he did, he was very thankful um for all of the effort that our staff um has put into this effort. And it does seem that we were able to reach a consensus on, on um the, the different items that had been brought up by the two different entities. So um, I don't wanna speak uh for Alderman Miller, obviously, but I did get a chance to speak to him on Thursday afternoon, and he was very um excited about being able to move forward.
Well, thank you for that. Um, any other comments? If not?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Oggin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout? Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And thank you, Judge, Commissioners, have a great day.
Jose, thank you, your team as well. Um, as Commissioner Oggin mentioned, this took a lot of work from legal, from everybody. And so uh, I think we came to a, a great place, and, and thank you for all that work.
Of course, Judge, and wouldn't be possible without great partners at Horizon City like Dr. Casada and, and Ms. Gepcia from uh, from Horizon, who are both on the call. So thank you again.
Okay, we look forward to your success, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, discuss and take appropriate action to adopt the updated FY 2023 through 2027 strategic plan.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. As you know, we've been working on um updating the strategic plan since earlier this year when the Court met for um a long uh day of planning and um work session. And uh, based on that information, we went back and worked with our departments to actually put actions to the objectives and the goals that the Court had outlined. And I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Madrigal. We presented this recently, um, but we've, we've made just the fine-tune adjustments, and we're ready to present for adoption, which is the start or kickoff to our budget hearings this week, because this budget is based on the strategic plan that the Court has discussed.
Thank you, Bitsy.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Lisa Lee Madrigal for the record. I'm going to be as effective and efficient as I can, cuz I know that I stand between you and lunch. I'm pleased to present the final version of the strategic plan for the 2023, 2027 fiscal years. The five-year plan includes the priorities and updates outlined by the Court during the strategic pla- uh planning session earlier this spring. After the retreat that Department heads and their staff went to work to create milestone actions that will move forward the Court's vision for the county. I will start with the presentation with a numeric overview of the county and provide data points that directly relate to the strategic plan. According to the U.S. Census, as of July 1st, 2021, the overall population of the county is approximately 868,000. The population for the city of El Paso is about 678,000. The difference between the county and the city's population is an educated estimate of the population of rural communities, which is approximately 189,532. The top three largest communities outside the city limits are the city of Socorro, with a population of 34,000, Horizon City, with a population of 22,500, and San Elisario, with 10,116. It is also important to highlight the population of Fort Bliss, which is approximately 11,260. Additionally, about 20 communities outside the city limits are labeled as either census-designated places, incorporated, or under-incorporated communities. In terms of gender, both the county and the city, females comprise a little over 50% of the population. Regarding age of residents, in the county, about 27% of people are 18 years and under. And the largest age category are people between the ages of 19 and 64, which comprise approximately 53% of the population. Data in this slide includes the number of employers, establishments in the county, which is about 15,000. Further, as highlighted in the graph, the majority of residents are Latinx or Hispanic and constitute about 82.9%. The median household income in the county is 48,292 compared to the U.S. median household income of 77,881. Further, between 2016 and 2020, the county's estimated number of veterans was little over 41,000. Using the estimate for veterans living in the city, we can say that about 5,000 veterans live outside the city limits, and the majority live within the city. The last statistic in this is the number of individuals with insurance, which for the county is 17.6%. Without insurance, I'm sorry. That is, out of 10 individuals, two will not have health insurance. Thank you. A study conducted in 2020 by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation focused on ranking counties on key health factors. El Paso County's overall ranking was 134 out of 254 Texas counties in terms of community-wide health, health factors, and 111 out of 254 in health outcomes. Specifically, the county was ranked 184 in physical environment, 162 in social and economic factors, 99 in clinical care, 76 in health behaviors, 229, which is closer to the bottom of the list, in quality of life, and 15 at the top of the ranking in length of life. The purpose of the strategic plan is to move forward the goals of the Court and to achieve the Court's vision and mission. We execute the strategic plan through nine strategic goals and by exercising our epic core values of professional, excellence, professionalism, integrity, and commitment. Every day, we strive, strive to be epic. The nine strategic goals are highlighted in this slide, and they include Goal One, Lead Justice Reform; Goal Two, Transform Economic Development; Goal Three, Increase Tourism; Goal Four, Upgrade Infrastructure; Goal Five, Promote Collaboration and Engagement; Goal Six, Engage Community Support; Goal Seven, Value El Paso County Family; Goal Eight, Strengthen Financial Health; Goal Nine, Optimize Internal Processes. Next, I have an outline or a brief summary of this, of the 2023, 2028 strategic plan. The plan includes nine strategic goals, 49 objectives, and nine, 96 milestone actions. It's important to note that the Department submitted 96 actions to advance the Court's objectives. As noted earlier, the fiscal 2023 objectives were prioritized by the Court during the two-day strategic planning session this past spring. I should also note that we have incorporated pending actions from the current fiscal uh strategic plan into this plan, since the completion date extends into the fiscal year 22, 2023 strategic plan. In addition to this presentation, the Court received a printed copy of the plan. If it's the pleasure of the Court to approve the plan, the next step is to publish the plan in Invisio. Invisio is our online platform that allows El Paso residents to review the progress and status of the plan. Next slide, please. Five objectives and nine milestone actions advance Goal One, Lead Justice Reform. A critical data point related to lead justice reform, specifically Objective 1.1, focuses on mental health crisis intervention. According to the Wood Johnson Foundation report discussed earlier, 23.5% of people reported having more than five consecutive days of poor mental health. Further, the National Alliance on Health, on Mental Health, NAMI, reports that 1 in 5 U.S. adults experience serious mental health. Given the data evaluating the effectiveness of crisis intervention team is essential. Next slide, please. This slide highlights the work under Goal One. Important actions include 1.1, the program evaluation of the mental crisis intervention team, Action 123, El Paso County Growth Management Report and Implementation, and Action 153, the development of the animal shelter with job training near the jail annex. Next slide, please. Six objectives were identified by the Court to transform economic development. An important statistic is that about 17.3 of households in the county do not have a subscription to broadband internet, as per the 2021 U.S. Census. Further, the findings of the UTEP Broadband Feasibility Study and Market Analysis, a milestone under the current strategic plan that will continue in fiscal year 2023, indicates that 31.5 of households in the county did not have broadband access. The UTEP statistics is almost twofold the U.S. Census number. Furthermore, the UTEP study also found that 17.3 of residents in the county did not have an internet connection. The findings suggest that not all households with an internet connection have broadband. Lastly, the Texas Controller reported that the city of El Paso is in this, in the county, is in a six-county region where 40% of households do not have access to high-speed wireless broadband as of April 2022. The need for community broadband service was recognized by this Court. Objective 2.1 is focused on developing community broadband service. Other objectives include 2.6, to have Fabens Airport become a major regional airport with aerospace, economic development, business investment. Next slide, please. Thirteen actions were identified by departments to move forward the strategic plan. These milestone includes Action 234, a childcare initiative; Action 212, Wi-Fi accessibility to all county parks. As reported in the third quarter of fiscal year 2022 strategic plan update, Ascara de Park and the Sportsplex have Wi-Fi available. This effort will expand Wi-Fi availability in county parks and will continue the work in fiscal year 2023. Next slide, please. Goal Three, increase tourism, includes six objectives. Seven points is the county's ranking in health outcome study conducted by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and previously noted, where the findings indicate that El Paso County was ranked 229 out of 254 in health outcomes related to quality of life, specifically health, comfort, and happiness. The objectives under this goal focus on tourism initiatives and their impact on quality of life. For example, Objective 3.2 is the investment on heritage and sports tourism. And Objective 3.4 is the development of Ascara de Park to be the destination venue in our community and to attract tourism from outside communities. Next slide, please. Departments proposed 11 milestone actions to move forward the goal and objectives. Among the actions are 321, outdoor bike venues; 341, the acceleration of the amphitheater after the study results; and specific milestones as part of the current strategic plan that will carry over in fiscal year 2022. Next slide, please. Goal Four is focused on upgrading infrastructure, and it's important to note that the county has one courthouse, 10 administrative annexes, two buildings, which include the MDR and the Taya's Building, one medical examiner's building, five sheriff's substations, one jail annex, one detention facility, and one fire range to maintain. Additionally, there are 429 wireless access points. And as noted in the previous slide, there are free high-speed wireless access at Ascara de Park and the Sportsplex. It is also important to note that yearly, 653 center miles are maintained, 65 miles of pavement are preserved, 22 miles of lane shoulders are reconstructed, 6100 street and traffic signs, and 600 general signs are replaced yearly. Objectives under Goal Four include investing in existing facilities and the creation of more annexes and sheriff's substations in the far east and outlining areas. Next slide, please. This slide highlights a specific work that will take place under Objective 4, Goal Four, and it includes 20 milestone actions that were identified by departments to move forward this goal. These actions include 411, new parks and trail construction based upon the recommendations of the Parks Master Plan; and 451, tire pickup disposal and enforcement action plan. I should also add that although these actions are listed under infrastructure, their impact crosses over to other goals. For example, 411, which also impacts the work under Goal Three and improves the quality of life. Next slide, please. Next, we have Goal Five, promote collaboration and engagement. Four objectives were prioritized by the court and include internal, external, and regional collaboration. And Objective 5.4, which is focused on expanding database decision-making through seeking feedback and information from our community. Last year, we launched the Strategic Plan Engagement Survey. We plan to solicit the community's feedback again this upcoming fiscal year, and will launch the survey in August. In this slide, I highlight the engagement work that we learned, to learn the stakeholders' vision for the Alameda properly, formerly known as the naked harem. Our grassroots approach was welcomed by the community and neighborhood associations. Moreover, today's presentation is a preview of how data pieces tell the story of why and how the county prioritized the goals and objectives of the strategic plan. Next slide, please. Eight actions support Goal Five, and they include 512, the Public Defender's Community Outreach Program, which is a carryover from fiscal year 2022; 521, by national strategy, also a carryover; and 541, the county's engagement strategy and action plan for development are on the docket for fiscal year 2023. Next slide, please. Goal Six is focused on advancing community support services. The court identified seven strategic objectives, and according to the U.S. Census, poverty rate in the U.S. is 10.5. El Paso County is 7.6 percentage points higher than the national average and stands at 17.5. Strategic objectives under this goal include the development of a strategic plan for affordable housing, the development of a program to eradicate poverty and increase social mobility, and to establish El Paso County as a veterans' capital of the United States. As Carl Dwyer would nicely summarize it, every day is a good day to be a veteran in El Paso.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. Thirteen milestone actions support Goal Five. Highlights of the work included is the expansion of a public transit system, which is also currently in the fiscal year 2020 strategic plan. The Veterans Assistant Program Resource Development work under these two milestones began in fiscal year 2022 and are part of the current strategic plan. Next slide, please. Value El Paso County Family is Goal Seven of the strategic plan. It supports three 28 employees, of which 39% of that number are currently uniform workforce. This goal includes four objectives that focus on implementing best practices, attracting and retaining an A-plus workforce, and moving the wage scale forward to minimum wage. Our employees are the backbone of the county. Next slide, please. Six actions are proposed to move forward this goal and include 713, expansion of new employee health clinics, and 711, a new milestone to provide financial assistance for employees wanting to become naturalized U.S. citizens. Next slide, please. Strengthen financial health, Goal Eight. Six strategic objectives were identified. These include aligning the revenue expense growth and identifying alternative resources, having participatory budgeting that would also fold into Objective 5.4; 8.3, reduce energy costs and energy management strategy, updating financial policies, creating a lifecycle replacement program fund, and prepare capital needs for long-term debt issuance. Next slide, please. Ten milestone actions support the objective of Goal Eight and include the review and update of fees and charges for service, the update of financial policies, and include an economic downturn plan. Lastly, we have Goal Nine, which aims to optimize internal processes. The goal is supported by four objectives that include utilizing information technology to improve efficiencies and effectiveness and evaluating current business processes. The overarching goal is of fostering a culture of excellence in all of our county services. This slide highlights the county's national equality program, our Road to Excellence in Service, and our internal Lean Six Sigma program, EP Exceeds, which to date has trained over 200 county employees in benefits of integrating a lean workplace. And the slide, next slide, please. Six actions support the goal, and they include 9.3, reducing paper waste by implementing new technologies, and 931, establishing a workforce for the county. And with this last slide, the court has been informed of the goals and objectives and actions of the 2023-2027 strategic plan. The strategic plan is our roadmap on how we plan to advance the vision, mission, and core values of excellence, professionalism, integrity, and creativity. We deliver a hot copy to the court last week for your review. If the court decides to approve the plan, the next step is to publish in Invisio, as I noted earlier. We're excited about the 2023-2027 strategic plan and are ready to roll up our sleeves and get to work. Are there any courts, any questions that I might address for the court?
Well, first of all, to thank you, this has been exceptional. I've been around a lot of Fortune 500 companies, and this does not stay behind in any way. I mean, you have done just an incredible job of mostly to show our public that, you know, how precise we intend to be. Sometimes I think government is sort of laissez-faire kind of attitude, and this is what most organizations, high-caliber organizations, high-performance organizations do. And I hope that they feel proud that this is all to make sure that we take their money and we spend it properly. You know, that we do everything possible to know what we're spending it on, that we're looking at it thoughtfully and purposefully. So, I thank you. You've done a great job in a short period of time, but I think we're in the place we'd like to be. So, and Betsy as well, for your support and encouraging that we continue to tie our budget to strategic planning. And like you said, this will be a great kickoff for our budget process. Yeah, Commissioner Leon?
I too. Dr. Madrigal, a great presentation. And you're right, Judge. There used to be a saying, "Well, that's good enough for government work." Well, it's not anymore. And as you can see, this is very precise. But I think it's Slide Seven. It's early on in your presentation, Dr. Madrigal, demonstrating the El Paso County's ranking medical-wise, our accessibility to medical services. I mean, this is astounding. I think it's further back.
It's when I talk about the Wood Johnson Foundation study.
Yeah.
One more before. One more. This one.
That one right there. I knew that El Paso ranked very low as far as accessibility to medical services, but I didn't realize it was that low. And that's only comparing us to other Texas communities. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's astonishing. It's astonishing. So, I'd like to have a copy of that slide. It's not in my notebook, but I'd really like to have one there because it tells so much about our community. And if we're talking about quality of life, that's the picture right now. Thank you.
Commissioner, I'll give you a copy of the report and the presentation.
I was saying, especially that we're the sixth-largest county in Texas, and to be ranked like that is...
We'll make sure each of you have a copy of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good observation. Thank you, Commissioner Leon.
Judge.
Yes, Commissioner Stout?
Thank you very much for the presentation and, of course, all the work that you and the team has put into this. I just had a couple of questions real quick. There were a couple of issues that we talked about before. One was the 2% for arts program with Capital Works. And then the other was setting the standard for providing access to county services for people with disabilities. I didn't see that in the presentation. I'm just wondering, want to make sure that they're included.
Yes, sir. Both are there. The one with the arts is actually under our ARPA plan.
Okay.
But it is in there. The other one is under ADA. It is under Section 7, I believe, and it is one of the actions. So, it's actually outlined in the action.
Okay.
The first focus is real heavy on electronic access. But we did note, I did note, and I've pulled it out separately, that we need to expand that accessibility to not just electronically.
Right.
Whether it's we're having a program, you all mentioned board appointments. And so, I do have that separately called out for department heads as well.
Okay.
But there is items in here related to that accessibility for all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
We need a motion, please.
To approve?
Yeah.
To accept?
So moved?
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaney?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Betsy, are there some individuals waiting for us to...
Yes, we have people waiting for Items 15, 16, and 17. Items 15, I do believe would be fairly, 15 and 16, I believe would be fairly quick. It's the calculations that have been accepting the calculations on the tax rate. And then Item 17 is a discussion about the emergency rental assistance. And we have, I believe, we have individuals here from Ayuda. So, they're here for Item 17 if the court would like to hear those before you break.
I'm assuming they're going to be here for all of them, so...
They're here specifically for Item 17.
17?
17.
Yeah. So, I don't want you to be waiting, so we'll go ahead and take that item. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Item number 17, health and social services. Discuss and take appropriate action on expanding the emergency rental assistance Phase II disbursement to include eligible residents of the city of El Paso.
Thank you.
Judge Commissioners, while I'm waiting for Irene to come up because we moved this up, I asked that Irene place this on the agenda, and the reason why is when we had our ERA Phase One, the court set policy about how those funds were going to be used. And then we got further into them, and we realized we weren't using them at the rate that we expected to be using them. Under Phase One, there was a risk, well, we actually were subject to returning those dollars. In this phase, we're not subject to returning, and Irene will go into more depth. We are subject to not being able to draw down as much in the future if we don't use these funds. But we wanted, I asked her, let's get this on earlier in the process, keep the court informed on where we are. It's still a new program with new administration for ERA Phase Two. So, the court may choose to not change anything in its policies. But I did ask that we just bring it back sooner, start having conversations earlier on, keeping the court in step with us as far as how the spending of the funds is going, are going, so you have some options available.
Well, thank you.
And with that, I will turn it over to Irene.
And as always, Irene pops up, right? She's on top of things. So, thank you, Irene. And I know we had a meeting this past week, and thank you for a little bit of an orientation. But if you could go ahead and explain to the court.
Certainly. Thank you. Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. Irene Mullins, Swala Community Services Department. I did want to be there in person, but, you know, I'm glad Betsy brought this item so that we don't leave our partners waiting in the audience. But thank you, Betsy, for that real brief introduction to the court. As Betsy said, this is an update on the progress. I wanted to keep you informed as we just submitted a quarterly report to the U.S. Treasury on this Phase II progress. And so, I wanted to ensure that I provide this update to you so that you know what we reported to the U.S. Treasury, and we provide you an opportunity to look at options within this phase of this program. We recently engaged the United Way, and Ayuda is a partner of the United Way. And I understand that they're in the audience. I'm not sure if the United Way is online, but they were invited also to attend. We engaged them in June to disperse this phase of the emergency rental assistance program. Phase Two is a little bit different than Phase One. The U.S. Treasury did establish performance metrics for jurisdictions, quarterly performance metrics. But Betsy is correct. While we are not subject to the obligation of funds, if we don't meet those metrics, we don't get the opportunity to unlock future funds if we don't perform or progress on this project. The Treasury for this phase awarded us approximately $3.5 million with an opportunity to receive up to $8 million more for our area. So, right now, money in the bank awarded to us by Treasury is $3.5 million. The remaining balance, approximately $4.5 million, is still up for grabs for us if we progress on performance metrics quarterly. In order for us to unlock 30% more, we were required to unlock the 30% tranche by the end of July. Of course, we did not meet that, but we were not, we're not subject to any de-obligation. It's just a date they gave us. If you expend your awarded funds, we can unlock an additional 30% for you to access. And while we only engaged the United Way and their partner Ayuda in June, I do realize that meeting that metric in July was unrealistic. So, that is not a burden that I wanted to place on our partners because I understood that that wasn't something within a month that we could meet. And so, that's not something that I expected the United Way or Ayuda to be able to do. However, they have done a fantastic job within those two months to do everything they can to move this money and disperse it to families in need in the out-county areas. From your backup, we put a performance checklist and progress of what's been performed so far by both our partners. And as well, you can see their outreach and marketing efforts they've done in the out-county areas. They've done a wonderful job, you know, hitting the ground running, identifying households still in need within the last two months. To this date, they dispersed approximately a little over 136,000. To this date, they dispersed approximately a little over 136,000 in both rent and utilities, benefiting approximately 77 out-county households. They've employed combined social media, online, and grassroots marketing and outreach campaigns to identify households in need. And if you recall, in February, you did approve dispersing 729,000 from this phase, from phase two, to our previous partners, the Paso del Norte Community Foundation. And that was done around February and March to because we saw a high demand from from that time for still for city and county rents. And so we dispersed 729,000 of that so that PDN could disburse before the end of their program. With that funding, PDN assisted 163 households. That was combined city and county residents. At that time, you you did elect to expand your eligibility to city residents for that specific amount. In total, of the three and a half million from this phase, including the 729,000 that you dispersed at that time to Paso del Norte, we've dispersed a total of 165 approximately for direct services from this fund, from the three and a half million, with approximately 270,000 for administrative expenses to our partners. This represents 32% of the awarded funds. So it's 32% of what we have right now, the three and a half million in the phase two. Again, in order for us to unlock the next tranche of the remaining funds available to us from era phase two, we must be 75% obligated. Right now, we're at 32%, but in order for us to unlock the next tranche, we have to be 75% obligated. Again, we're not there yet, but keep in mind, we just engaged our nonprofit partners, Ayuda and the United Way in June. And as I said before, they've hit the ground running since then, and they have done a remarkable job identifying households up to this point. With this update, what I wanted to accomplish is just to make sure that you're aware of what the era requirements are, as well as provide you the progress and what's been accomplished by our partners so far. I also want to make sure that I provide you with an opportunity to consider a policy expansion of eligibility, should you want to do that at this time. You previously, with this award, established a policy to restrict these funds to only out-county residents and those just as involved non-veteran and veterans that are being cared for by our Office of Reentry. Regardless of where their housing intervention is established, whether they need rent assistance in the city or rent assistance in the county, your policy allows for us to assist our just as involved reentry clients from this fund. But the remainder of the policy is only to focus on out-county residents, those that live outside the city limits of El Paso. From the United Way's recent reports, they do continue to see a high demand from city residents in need of rental and utility assistance to date. They report that approximately 8% of the calls and online portal requests that are fielded by the United Way are from city residents. So as the fiscal year is wrapping up, there are no rental assistance resources right now available for city residents. And so if you were to want to consider expanding your eligibility beyond the out-county residents and beyond your current policy to city residents at this time, you may consider that now. And and I want to offer you a couple of options for you to think about if you want to consider that. You may expand to city residents with a condition to assist them with no more, these are just suggestions, with no more than three months of rent, for example, to city residents. And the reason we mention three months is during the era, the ERA phase one of this program, the Treasury capped total assistance to all households to not exceed more than 15 months of renting utilities. That was the cap. With phase two of the ERA, they increased that to 18 months. But those that received 15 months in the prior phase are only eligible for three more months. So it's not starting fresh. So if you and that's to not duplicate assistance. And so if you receive the max during the era phase one, you can only you are only eligible for three more months of rent during phase two. So this is why we came up with this suggestion. If you choose to expand to city, we could do it in that fashion, only cap it to three months, up to three months of rent for city residents. Or two, you may also impose a limit amount or a percentage of funds that you may want to dedicate for city assistance and then leave a remaining balance to continue to focus on out-county residents outside the city of El Paso. For example, you may want to keep 80% of your two and a half million balance right now to out-county eligibility residents and then or dedicate 20% to city residents. Again, this is this is just a suggestion for you as part of some of the options you may consider. You may consider any amount or any percentage, whatever you may choose. And then we could also do a combination of both those options, where you limit the amount of your balance for eligibility expansion, and you still restrict the amount of rent eligible to no more than three months for city residents. Or you may choose to keep the policy status quo. That that will give our partners more time to conduct, continue to conduct all the marketing and outreach that they've been doing so far. And they can and we can continue to trudge along and assist our out-county residents with the funding we have. The grant expires in 2025, as is for most of our Treasury dollars during the last stimulus package that the federal government sent to jurisdictions. And while there is no de-obligation penalty for us under this phase for missing any metrics or quarterly thresholds, the sooner we meet that 75% fund obligation, the sooner that we can get the opportunity to unlock the remaining four and a half million that is available to us. I also want to continue to reiterate that our partners are very invested in this collaboration with the county. They have and will continue to work diligently with whatever decision you make. They will continue to still focus on out-county residents, as I know that that has been a priority for the court. But so they are willing to work with the county, whatever decision you make. I know that I see that Ayuda is there in the audience. I think a United Way is online, if not there as well. And so I'm happy to answer any of the questions or concerns you may have, but I'm pretty sure that our partners also are there to answer any questions that you may have with them as well.
Mr. Yanis, he's in the audience here with us, right?
So we have a couple of folks from Ayuda, Judge. I see Miguel Chacon and Olivia Figueroa.
Yeah, we could, yeah, if we could hear from you.
And while they make their way up, Judge, if I could just make a couple of.
Sure, sure.
So I am glad that we're looking at this issue earlier because I think that that's an error that we committed during our ERA one funds when we didn't realize that Paso del Norte wasn't getting as much of the funds out to the county residents as we needed them to until a little bit later in the process. And as we all know, unfortunately, that led to having to deobligate some funds. So I'm glad that we are looking at this issue earlier on than we did last time. We we learned our lesson, I think. But I do just want to say, this is a new program. We part of that lesson that we learned with PDN is that we really needed an organization who had boots on the ground, who knew these communities, who could identify these households that had this need, which is something we didn't have with the PDN contract. And that's why we asked Ayuda, and they've been great partners in this effort. We did just in June really get the project started with having Ayuda really do a lot of this outreach for us in the out-county areas. But I know there's been some hiccups, which is completely expected with new programs. I know there were some issues with the payment system and getting some of the materials out and everyone agreeing to them. But it seems like now the program is really starting, starting to get going. So I know Miguel is going to talk to us about some some initiatives that Ayuda is getting ready to start to really, really try to get some media attention, get the information out to the community. So just from my perspective, I'm glad that we're looking at this issue. But I feel like at the same time, we also have to make sure we give our community partners enough time to do what we've asked them to do, which is really get the word out into the county. So I agree that we should be looking at this issue regularly. But I'm just worried that we haven't really given them yet that time since the program really just got started not too long ago.
Yeah, I was just going to comment that Irene is extremely accountable and meticulous about things. And so the fact that she feels very complimentary to your work and everything that you're doing is, you know, we take that to heart. So thank you.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge. First and foremost, we'd like to thank the opportunity that you guys have given to Ayuda to perform on the field and the outreach outreach for this program. We are here just to plead more time. We believe that there is a lot of need still out there. We just didn't have had the time necessary to to get these folks and get them to apply. We understand the necessities of the community, and we believe that we are working in the field. And because we are also duplicating our efforts starting this week, we believe that we are going to be able to accomplish the metrics that the U.S. Treasury needs in order to meet our benchmarks for this program. We are duplicating, like I said, the outreach efforts because we are just we got a quarter from Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs and another in a different grant with the mortgage system program. And we're going to be doing an outreach, an intensive outreach work here in El Paso County, Presidio, Culverston, Hattspur County, with around 20 promotoras in the field. So starting this week, we are starting definitely aggressive campaign on areas like Socorro, Onhorizon, that we haven't been able to touch yet. So we believe with those campaigns, we're going to be able to accomplish the 244 applicants that we need in order to encumber the 2.2 million dollars that we need in order to get the additional $5 million for this grant.
Thank you. Thank you. Were you going to comment here? Yeah.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Primero, quiero darles las gracias por darnos la oportunidad de trabajar con ustedes y llevarles las necesidades que requiere la comunidad, que viene siendo todo el condado, las colonias. Y sabemos que ahí es donde hay más necesidad y es donde queremos que ustedes consideren para que nos sigan dando la oportunidad de seguir llevando recursos a nuestra gente, nuestra comunidad.
No, gracias.
No me había presentado. That's Olivia Figueroa. Soy promotora de salud por más de 20 años, así que tenemos la experiencia total de conocer, de que nos conozca la comunidad y conocerla. Y sabemos identificar las las necesidades que que requiere nuestras comunidades. Y soy directora de la organización Ayuda por más de 14 años. Y estamos a la orden, y muchísimas gracias.
Le agradecemos muchísimo. Su apoyo de promotoras ha sido algo muy importante para nosotros en diferentes aspectos, pero gracias por lo que está haciendo ahorita.
Esperamos que consideren nuestra propuesta.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
I'd like to mention another item that is very important to consider, that 100% of our staff are county residents. So with these programs, we have been able to expand our labor and been able to provide jobs to promotoras that are county residents. So whatever decision is made today is definitely going to affect the position of our promotoras for future months to come for this program.
Thank you. Great observation. Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Leon?
Irene, you mentioned a combo option. By using that, would that limit our ability to reach all of our county residents?
No, sir. None of the recommended options that I provided excludes county residents at all. You can continue to work and supply this funding assistance to county residents while limiting, opening up the expansion to city residents, which is why I provided some options for you. Either just open it to city residents completely. Again, I would recommend limiting it to up to three months of assistance or limiting the amount you set aside for city residents and capping it to three months of assistance. If you're wanting to expand your eligibility right now, I would recommend that combo option. Neither one of those excludes county residents at all. Our partners will continue to focus and work with county households to identify them for need and assistance.
What would impact them is that it would, whatever money you use for the city, obviously, is less that you would use for the county. That's the only impact.
Yeah, and that's what I don't want to do, is impact our county residents in any way. And my my other concern is, of course, at the end of the of the time restraints, that we do not return any money to to the federal government.
Right. So at this point, we have approximately two and a half million dollars within the balance that was awarded to us from the U.S. Treasury for this phase. And then we have four and a half million that we can unlock if we progress and perform up to the 75% that we're required to perform to be able to unlock those funds. And so it's a total of $8 million for our region and our community. Again, right now, we have the two and a half million that we are have yet to disburse fully. And so this is just providing you that information and giving you all the availability tools and recommendations for you to make a sound decision. I don't, I don't believe, I mean, our partners are very diligent, very committed to this. They will continue to focus on county residents. But the judge is correct. If you do open it up to city residents, it does decrease the amount available that you have. However, it is meeting a need that the city does have. We do have a high demand in city residents at this point calling, asking for rental and utility assistance. There is no source right now for them at this point. But it's all up to you. You can choose to maintain your policy status quo, Commissioner and Judge. You don't have to change anything at this point. I'm just giving you some options that you may have should you want to consider expanding.
Okay, thank you.
And I think what I really appreciate what Commissioner Olgin said, and that is, we requested to do this for the county, but we haven't given them the opportunity. But at the same time, if we get to a point where we're not moving quick enough, then I think we shouldn't stop from helping any anyone else from the city that would be eligible for it. But I would like to say that we give them the opportunity at this point, leave it as this, and then continue to look at it to see how we're tracking.
Yes, no, I agree, Judge. I think we definitely have to keep looking.
Commissioner Stout, please.
Thanks. So I want to, I guess, ask a couple of questions. The first one, just to be clear, the city has run out of their ERA funding, and so there is no more rental assistance for city residents, right? Or residents that are within the city limits, correct?
That's correct.
And and also, I want to be clear on what the what is the date by which we have to have dedicated the 75% before we can unlock or upon which the unlocking of the other part is contingent?
The Treasury had the date imposed to us to be able to unlock the next tranche was July of this year. And that would have been 75% obligated of the three and a half that they awarded.
It was it was July of this year?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So are we talking about we have the opportunity to unlock in the future, or we don't? Because if the July date passed, then I'm a little confused.
So we still have the opportunity to unlock future tranches. They wanted us to be 75% obligated so that they can give us 30% more, and then we progress from there. We are, they are not penalizing us for not meeting that metric. What they're doing is they're just halting us from unlocking the the further funds that are available to our jurisdiction for it.
Until, so it's being halted until we actually obligate the 75%?
That's correct.
Okay. And so we have, do we have waiting lists, or do we have a list of people within the city limits who have who have come to us or who have come to the city or to the United Way or whomever we've been working with and that are, you know, identified right now that we know are in need right now in this moment, as opposed to having to go out and find them?
Yes, sir. And I believe the United Way just locked down. I think I saw Angelica come on. There she is. She may be able to provide you more of those statistics from from what they've received so far.
Good afternoon. This is Angelica Mata. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Resiliency here at United Way. I did have my hand up, so I'll take it off as soon as I finish. But basically, when it comes to the program right now, yes, we are, we do prioritize the county. And based off of the conversation that Irene presented, the county is an important area for us to continue supporting. But there is still that demand that we're seeing when it comes to the city. And right now, based off of some metrics, there's a list that we've compiled where we've provided 141 individuals with a courtesy referral directing them to some type of assistance that may be. that may be possible when it comes to rental, and we know it's limited. And when I say very limited, at most, it's probably a month. And some of these resources have already been expanded. So, I do have an active list of individuals seeking rental assistance within the city limits. I even had someone show up today at our office seeking assistance, and I had to kind of gently have her, provided her with options for her to consider and to also call me back tomorrow just in case there's any updates in terms of future availability. So, we are seeing that demand based off of calls that we receive on a daily basis, and we do track and gather information as best as possible.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification on that. And, you know, it's really shocking to me that we're, you know, sitting here telling people that even though they're county taxpayers, they live within the county of El Paso, they have been identified as people who are in need. If they don't get this assistance, they could become homeless. And we were telling them, just because they live within the city limits, we're going to watch them go through that issue. It is, in my opinion, just shocking that we're even considering telling people that. When we have, we have the funding available, sitting there, waiting to be obligated, and we're holding it back. You know, I would really advocate for reconsidering and allowing folks that live within the city limits, that live within my precinct and some of the other precincts as well. County Judge, you represent everybody, so they're all within your district, right? Your large, very large countywide district. But, you know, I think that we can, I think we can work both sides. I think we can continue to work with Ayuda and the promotoras and help them to identify additional people that are in need outside in the unincorporated areas. But we have people that are in need right now, and we need to prioritize people that are waiting for this assistance, you know?
Commissioner Stout, if I can just interrupt you for a second, I agree with you. If we were to just go with a combo unit, and we ran out of funds, Irene, does this unlock, it sounds like a video game, it unlocks another prize. It unlocks more funding that we can also then look at concentrating into our county residents, that they don't fall behind whatsoever. But, yeah, those folks within the city limits are still our constituents, and I feel strongly that I need to help as many people as we can.
So, the sooner we, the sooner we obligate the 75%, the sooner we're able to unlock that additional funding. So, again, we can also accelerate more assistance to people in both, in both sides, right? Whether they're in the city limits or in the unincorporated parts of the county. I just, I just feel like it's very difficult for me to want to tell these folks, because you live in the city limits, even though the city has already spent all of its ERA funding, even though you are a county taxpayer, you are not eligible for this funding, even though you're on the verge of losing your home. And we're trying to find additional people that may be in need in the unincorporated areas, and we're prioritizing, we're prioritizing that. You know, it's, to me, it's pretty urgent.
I think the only thing, Commissioner Stout, is it's a matter of timing, that if we do it that way, then eventually the county will have the same issue of being homeless or going, not being able to pay for a place or anything else. Because right now, I think we can get all that money, I mean, provide all that money quickly, we just haven't had the process to be able to accomplish it. But I do, obviously, I agree. I don't know if there's a way, because you were saying, Irene, that in any situation, you know, that we're very flexible. So, I don't know if there's a way to, you know, based on the need? Like, if someone was going to be homeless, just like we did with the veterans, that we did, you know, they're eligible no matter where they're at. We did that with Criminal Justice, you know, in the, one of the initiatives. So, I don't know, because I would hate anybody that would be out homeless and we don't help them. On the other hand, the timing is going to do the reverse, where we're going to not be able to help the county because we spent the money. So, it's a really difficult situation. Could we, I mean, I want to give them the full opportunity, but I also don't want anybody to stay in a very difficult situation. Is there any criteria at this time until we, that we could give to a city resident that has a criteria that would be, you know, in a vulnerable situation? Can we do that? Because I just, that's a great argument. I mean, we don't want someone in desperation, and then we're not, we're waiting for someone else to support or to help out.
You strongly can, Judge. You all can decide on what policy expansion you want to do. If you want to put conditions on how, if you choose to expand to city residents, and if you want to put conditions on how much we can expand, unlock just a certain percentage or an amount just for city residents, leave the remainder for out county for now. Or do unlock a little bit, and then only cap it at only three months of assistance. What we have found through our general assistance program is, and we experienced this throughout this past fiscal year, as some city residents were pending rental assistance funding from the first phase through the city's run program, and there was some gaps in funding award and contractual issues. By dispersing the money from the city to PDN, many of those city residents came to the county's general assistance program to help prevent evictions, because they were behind a couple of months, and we were able to help them to prevent those evictions. And so, what we're seeing is that two to three months was a huge help for some of these city residents that we ended up assisting. And I think that if you do decide to open, we could put criteria that caps the amount for city residents, if you want, up to three months of rent only. That facilitates our program requirements with the Treasury, because if they were assisted previously, up to 15 months of rent, they are only eligible for three months anyway. And so, if we cap it to three months, I still think we're averting evictions at this point, while at the same time meeting the requirements of the Treasury's guidelines, and we're expanding to city residents who are clearly in need at this point. And three months of assistance does not deplete as much from your current balance for out county residents as it would if you would open it first come, first served, and open to all with whatever expansion.
Yeah, and I like what you're saying. It would cover that acuteness of, you know, they're in a difficult situation, the three months would be very valuable to them and avoid the eviction. Commissioner Stout?
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're talking about, but again, I need to, I want to remind you all that the city has depleted its funds, and I feel like it's incumbent upon us to step in and also provide, you know, additional funding within the city limits, because there is no more. The city has a lot more population than the unincorporated areas of the county, so that's understandable that it went through its funding much more quickly. And I feel like, you know, the majority of the residents in El Paso County actually live within the city limits. And we, if, you know, you, I just, I just think, like, at this point, since there is no longer any funding, you know, coming from any other entity, it's our job now to take care of everybody who's in, who's in need, if we can. And because, I mean, obviously, I think Ms. Mata Lindstrom said that there's 200 or 300 people that she had to refer to some other type of help, right? And so, those people, in my opinion, are folks that are in need right now and should not be put on, I feel like, a different playing field, because they don't have access to anything else right now.
Irene, do you know if, because what I would hate is that they, the city didn't utilize the budget properly to help or assist properly, and then it puts a burden on us. I mean, our county residents have to pay, you know, additional for library, additional for water parks, you know, our counties are not eligible for these programs. And not, this is not like a come-back-at-them kind of situation, but I think we need to consider, why isn't the city, or has the city done enough for mortgage and utilities? Or are we just taking the burden of something they decided not to do? Do you have any information on the amount of money that they've spent? And, because they could have spent it on something else, while they could have used it for rental and utilities?
Sir, the city received about $34 million in rental and utility assistance, and they dedicated all of that towards the rental. They've already expended their Phase One and Phase Two, and they did dedicate the entirety of those funds to that. I believe they assisted about 7,000 households inside the city with, the most with a max of 15 months of rent and utility assistance with that. So, the investment from the city with their Treasury dollars was approximately $34 million.
Were the county residents eligible for that money?
With their fund, no, but we had our own Phase One. Our Phase One funding was about $4 million that we dispersed in the out county and combination city and county as well.
Judge, if I may. So, I think one of the suggestions that I heard Irene make would alleviate some of Commissioner Stout's concerns about the residents of the city who are in need of help right now, as well as our concern about making sure that these funds are particularly available to out county residents, as we promised they would be when we originally accepted the award. But I think, Irene, you had mentioned maybe obligating or setting aside, or capping it at about 20% of the total funds, maybe for those to try to cover those city residents that really are in need right now. That would leave 80% of the funds available to county residents, so that Ayuda can go through its initiatives and try to make sure that it's identifying everyone in need. And then, of course, we can definitely revisit the issue, maybe in a couple of months, two or three months, maybe before the end of the year and the next quarter, and see if we have to, you know, yeah, recalibrate, recalculate those amounts. But I think at least that way, we would catch some of the folks that certainly we don't want to be facing homelessness, just because they do live within the city of El Paso. I would follow Irene's suggestion and do that, the 20% for the city residents right now, with the understanding that we'll look at that again, as well as capping it at the three months pursuant to the Treasury guidance.
So, the three-month option, that would be then, of a commission?
So, the combination of both.
Again, I don't agree with that. I think that we should treat every El Paso County resident the same. If they have need, they have need, and we have folks that are right now identified that have need. And, you know, that's, I just, you know, it's shocking to me that we're, that we're talking about, that we're talking about things this way. It's, it's, there are folks within the city limits that are, that live in areas that are much, that are even more underprivileged than some of the areas in the out county. And I think we all need to realize that when we're making these decisions, we should prioritize where there's need. And there's definitely need here within the city limits as well. I would like to, I mean, I see that the court is looking at, you know, doing the cap, but I would like to also set a timeline then on, by what date should we expect to have the money, that's the 80%, that's going to be dedicated to the out county areas or unincorporated areas? How much time do we actually need for that to be dedicated? Because, again, if we're still looking for people, trying to just, you know, find and find people, when we already have people that are in need, when we already have an urgency, a sense of urgency, I feel like there has to be, it can't just be, well, from here to two more months or three more months. I mean, I feel like we really need to set some, a timeline there. So that, again, if we aren't finding the people that we need to in the unincorporated areas, people in districts like mine can actually tap into this money that I feel like they deserve.
Well, and I think that that's what coming back and looking at it in a couple of months would do, would let us see what kind of path we're on, considering the initiatives that Ayuda is going to be undertaking. So, I don't necessarily feel like I would want to place a deadline, but we do definitely want to come back and look at it in a couple of months. So, I'm going to go ahead and just make the motion that we go ahead and free up 20% of the total funds available for city residents, and then cap it at the three months, the way that Irene suggested.
Can I just make a quick suggestion? Irene, if you could just let us know, I agree with the urgency that we have within the city, because I think the people that I've sent to your office have all been, if not all, most of them have been within the city, that if you see that we're getting to a crisis within the city, that you get to the county, put it on the agenda quicker so we can make the necessary adjustments.
Absolutely.
And with that caveat, I'll second that.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
No.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. I'll be keeping you updated at every step of the way and bring this back, like Commissioner Leon suggested, if we see any other urgency that develops.
I really like that, because that sort of balances a little bit closer to Commissioner Stout. If you see anything that becomes critical, or the city is, you know, it's overwhelming and we're not meeting our goals, I mean, let's not wait for any longer than to bring it back here to the court.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Irene.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Lindstrom, thank you. And thank you, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
I do know, we are ready on items 15 and 16, if the court would accept those rates. I know we're...
Yeah, I don't like to push it that much, because our thinking does not, is not as good in...
It starts fading.
It starts fading. So, I appreciate that. If you want to make it half an hour instead of, yeah, half an hour, is that okay, Commissioner Stout?
Yeah.
Half an hour, okay. So, we'll take half an hour, we'll be back here.
Perfect, thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Commissioners Court, will recess for 30 minutes.
We're really excited to host a Girls' Fast Pitch Camp with the UTEP softball players. They're here all day. It's an all-day camp for girls aging 8 to 12. And they're really out here having a good time, learning the fundamentals and the basics of softball. I think it's important for youth this age just to make sure they have the right mechanics down, and doing the fundamental things right, things correctly, so that way, when they get older, it's easy for them to do.
Having an all-skills camp is really cool. Having it in a one day, it's even better. I really like the fact that they're focusing on different strains, so they separated the catchers, and they're still running bases, and I saw them working on pitching. You know, giving the softball community a space to evolve is great.
The sports park brings people from all over the county. Because it's a large venue, it's one of the largest in the county for sports, events like this one, the camp at the sports park, are really great, because it just provides another opportunity for our community children to come out.
It's a beautiful location, the way the fields are actually maintained. Very proud of the fact that there are almost mini-professional baseball fields out there. So we have hundreds of people coming to El Paso and really taking advantage of the sports park. And it is an economic driver for the east side and for the entire county.
Come and play with us at El Paso County Parks!
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
We think this park needs more shade.
These are the biggest ones.
It is too hot in El Paso, and so we want to make it more beautiful, at the same time, create shade more pleasant for everyone to enjoy. And we're planting nighty trees, sardaracate park, all over the park and in the golf course. So we're very excited and thankful that we were chosen by the El Paso Downtown Lions Club for this project. Today, I haven't counted them, but I'm going to guess around 10 from my organization. We also partnered with Echo El Paso, and they came and have people helping. We also asked for the master gardeners to come from Texas A&amp;M. I know that it will bring much-needed shade, and just, again, just a windbreaker as well for, you know, the heavy gusty winds that we get here in El Paso. So it's going to be something that the whole community will be able to enjoy.
Everyone has been talking in the news about a carbon reduction-type, you know, machinery, some sort of mechanism. Well, nature's got us beat on that, and that's trees. Not only do we have a scarcity of trees here, but they also help cool the ground, combat the urban heat island effect. As they grow, they also beautify our neighborhoods, our parks.
This is the fun part of our job. This is what we love to do. So happy to help however we can, and just excited that we were selected by both of these agencies.
So we're planting a lot of drought-tolerant native trees. So we got Palo Verdes, we got Arizona ash, we got raywoods.
Once they're established, they won't need as much water. Create a lot of shade.
But also become, invite habitats, wildlife. Everybody who's been a long resident of El Paso knows in winter, we see a lot of very exotic birds.
We just like to do this, to enhance the community.
I want to welcome everybody today to the El Paso County and Lower Valley Water District ribbon-cutting event for the first-time wastewater project for the El Conquistador Alhura subdivision.
So today, we connected two more neighborhoods to sewer services. So these are two neighborhoods that now don't have to rely on septic tanks, that many of which are 20, 30 years old, have started to fail, can cause very serious health issues for the residents.
Because you have to be, I mean, you have to be careful that it won't get spilled, or you have to be very cautious with that, because of the environment. So it is a nuisance for, to have a septic tank.
One, two, three.
Three.
All right. Thank you.
The project, we started this project three years ago. We had a meeting with the, with the community complaining about their septic tanks. So we saw an opportunity coming up from the state, about a million-dollar grant funding. So we went ahead and seeked the court's approval.
This particular project was made possible through funding that the county received from the Texas Department of Agriculture. The Lower Valley Water District contributed $2 million towards the project. The grant that the county received from the Department of Agriculture was for $1 million. So total, that was the cost of the project, $3 million, to connect about 100 homes to first-time sewer service.
So the contractor, approximately three, four or five miles' worth of infrastructure that they laid, like you see behind me, the green pipes behind me, those are the eight-inch pipes that were used on the streets. So, of course, they have to get an excavator, tear the, tear part of the roads, excavate five feet, and there's some areas all the way in Alhura, this area, they went down to 15 feet down. They put the pipe, connect the pipe together, to include the service ladder and the service connection for each house, to include those large manholes behind us as well. They cover it, compact it very well, then after that, lay the new layer of asphalt on top of it. After they complete that portion and test the pipes, they went ahead and start inside the property. They connected the service line from the property, from the property line all the way to the house. After they connected it, it's working fine, they went ahead and decommissioned the existing septic tanks. I mean, it's a big relief to me, and it gave me a pleasure at the end.
Connecting families to water and wastewater infrastructure is a priority for this court. One day, we can say that every person in El Paso County has access to water and wastewater.
I think it's, it's good for the community, it's better for the environment as well. And I think it's just a good quality right now.
We're really excited to host a Girls' Fast Pitch Camp with the UTEP softball players. They're here all day. It's an all-day camp for girls aging 8 to 12. And they're really out here having a good time, learning the fundamentals and the basics of softball. really out here having a good time, learning the fundamentals and the basics of softball. really out here having a good time, learning the fundamentals and the basics of softball.
I think it's important for youth this age just to make sure they have the right mechanics I think it's important for youth this age just to make sure they have the right mechanics down and doing the fundamental things right, things correctly. So that way, when they down and doing the fundamental things right, things correctly. So that way, when they get older, it's easy for them to do. get older, it's easy for them to do.
Having an all-skills camp is really cool. Having it in a one day, it's even better. Having an all-skills camp is really cool. Having it in a one day, it's even better. I really like the fact that they're focusing on different strains. So they separated the I really like the fact that they're focusing on different strains. So they separated the catchers and they're still running bases. And I saw them working on pitching. You know, catchers and they're still running bases. And I saw them working on pitching. You know, giving the softball community a space to evolve is great. giving the softball community a space to evolve is great.
The sports park brings people from all over the county. Because it's a large venue, The sports park brings people from all over the county. Because it's a large venue, it's one of the largest in the county for sports. Events like this one, the camp at it's one of the largest in the county for sports. Events like this one, the camp at the sports park are really great because it just provides another opportunity for our the sports park are really great because it just provides another opportunity for our community children to come out. community children to come out.
It's a beautiful location. The way the fields are actually maintained. Very proud It's a beautiful location. The way the fields are actually maintained. Very proud of the fact that there are almost a mini professional baseball fields out there. So of the fact that there are almost a mini professional baseball fields out there. So we have hundreds of people coming to El Paso and really taking advantage of the sports we have hundreds of people coming to El Paso and really taking advantage of the sports park. And it is an economic driver for the east side and for the entire county. park. And it is an economic driver for the east side and for the entire county.
Come play with us at El Paso County Park! Come play with us at El Paso County Park!
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US Mexico border, provides students comprehensive health sciences institution on the US Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together. we can do together.
We think this park needs more shade. We think this park needs more shade.
These are the biggest ones. These are the biggest ones.
It is too hot in El Paso. And so we want to make it more beautiful, at the same It is too hot in El Paso. And so we want to make it more beautiful, at the same time, create shade more pleasant for everyone to enjoy. time, create shade more pleasant for everyone to enjoy.
And we're planting nighty trees, set aside of the park, all over the park and in And we're planting nighty trees, set aside of the park, all over the park and in the golf course. So we're very excited and thankful that we were chosen by the El Paso the golf course. So we're very excited and thankful that we were chosen by the El Paso Downtown Lions Club for this project. Downtown Lions Club for this project.
Today, I haven't counted them, but I'm going to guess around 10 from my organization. Today, I haven't counted them, but I'm going to guess around 10 from my organization. We also partnered with Echo El Paso, and they came and have people helping. And we We also partnered with Echo El Paso, and they came and have people helping. And we also asked for the master gardeners to come from Texas A&amp;M. also asked for the master gardeners to come from Texas A&amp;M.
I know that it will bring much-needed shade and just, again, just a windbreaker I know that it will bring much-needed shade and just, again, just a windbreaker as well for, you know, the heavy gusty winds that we get here in El Paso. So it's going as well for, you know, the heavy gusty winds that we get here in El Paso. So it's going to be something that the whole community will be able to enjoy. to be something that the whole community will be able to enjoy.
Everyone has been talking in the news about a carbon reduction type, you know, Everyone has been talking in the news about a carbon reduction type, you know, machinery, some sort of mechanism. Well, nature's got us beat on that, and that's machinery, some sort of mechanism. Well, nature's got us beat on that, and that's trees. Not only do we have a scarcity of trees here, but they also help cool the ground, trees. Not only do we have a scarcity of trees here, but they also help cool the ground, combat the urban heat island effect. As they grow, they also beautify our neighborhoods, combat the urban heat island effect. As they grow, they also beautify our neighborhoods, our parks. our parks.
This is the fun part of our job. This is what we love to do. So happy to help however This is the fun part of our job. This is what we love to do. So happy to help however we can and just excited that we were selected by both of these agencies. we can and just excited that we were selected by both of these agencies.
So we're planting a lot of drought-tolerant native trees. So we got Palo Verde's, we So we're planting a lot of drought-tolerant native trees. So we got Palo Verde's, we got Arizona ash, we got raywoods. got Arizona ash, we got raywoods.
Once they're established, they won't need as much water. Create a lot of shade. Once they're established, they won't need as much water. Create a lot of shade.
But also become invite habitats, wildlife. Everybody who's been a long resident of But also become invite habitats, wildlife. Everybody who's been a long resident of El Paso knows in winter, we see a lot of very exotic birds. El Paso knows in winter, we see a lot of very exotic birds.
We just like to do this to enhance the community. We just like to do this to enhance the community.
I want to welcome everybody today to the El Paso County and Lower Valley Water I want to welcome everybody today to the El Paso County and Lower Valley Water District ribbon cutting event for the first time wastewater project for the El Conquistador District ribbon cutting event for the first time wastewater project for the El Conquistador Alhura subdivision. Alhura subdivision.
So today, we connected two more neighborhoods to sewer services. So these are two neighborhoods So today, we connected two more neighborhoods to sewer services. So these are two neighborhoods that now don't have to rely on septic tanks, that many of which are 20, 30 years old, that now don't have to rely on septic tanks, that many of which are 20, 30 years old, have started to fail, can cause very serious health issues for the residents. have started to fail, can cause very serious health issues for the residents.
It's because you have to be antinom and you have to be careful that it won't get It's because you have to be antinom and you have to be careful that it won't get spilled, or you have to be very cautious with that because of the environment. So spilled, or you have to be very cautious with that because of the environment. So it is a nuisance for a septic tank. it is a nuisance for a septic tank.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Three. Three.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
The project, we started this project three years ago. We had a meeting with the The project, we started this project three years ago. We had a meeting with the community complaining about their septic tanks. So we saw an opportunity coming up community complaining about their septic tanks. So we saw an opportunity coming up from the state about a million dollar grant funding. So we went ahead and seek the court's from the state about a million dollar grant funding. So we went ahead and seek the court's approval. approval.
This particular project was made possible through funding that the county received This particular project was made possible through funding that the county received from the Texas Department of Agriculture. The Lower Valley Water District contributed from the Texas Department of Agriculture. The Lower Valley Water District contributed $2 million towards the project. The grant that the county received from the Department $2 million towards the project. The grant that the county received from the Department of Agriculture was for $1 million. So total, that was the cost of the project, $3 million of Agriculture was for $1 million. So total, that was the cost of the project, $3 million to connect about 100 homes to first time sewer service. to connect about 100 homes to first time sewer service.
So the contractor approximately three, four or five miles worth of infrastructure So the contractor approximately three, four or five miles worth of infrastructure that they laid, like if you see behind me, the green pipes behind me, those are the that they laid, like if you see behind me, the green pipes behind me, those are the eight inch pipes that were used on the streets. So of course, they have to get an excavator, eight inch pipes that were used on the streets. So of course, they have to get an excavator, tear the third part of the roads, excavate five feet, and there's some areas all the tear the third part of the roads, excavate five feet, and there's some areas all the way in Lourdes area, they went down to 15 feet down. They put the pipe, connect the way in Lourdes area, they went down to 15 feet down. They put the pipe, connect the pipe together to include the service ladder and the service connection for each house pipe together to include the service ladder and the service connection for each house to include those large manholes behind us as well. They cover it, compact it very well. to include those large manholes behind us as well. They cover it, compact it very well. Then after that, lay the new layer of asphalt on top of it. After they complete that portion Then after that, lay the new layer of asphalt on top of it. After they complete that portion and test the pipes, they went ahead and start inside the property. They connected the service and test the pipes, they went ahead and start inside the property. They connected the service line from the property, from the property line all the way to the house. After they line from the property, from the property line all the way to the house. After they connected it, it's working fine. They went ahead and decommissioned the existing septic connected it, it's working fine. They went ahead and decommissioned the existing septic tanks. I mean, it's a big relief to me and it gave me a pleasure at the end. tanks. I mean, it's a big relief to me and it gave me a pleasure at the end.
Connecting families to water and wastewater infrastructure is a priority for this court. Connecting families to water and wastewater infrastructure is a priority for this court. One day, we can say that every person in El Paso County has access to water and wastewater. One day, we can say that every person in El Paso County has access to water and wastewater.
I think it's good for the community. It's better for the environment as well. And I think it's good for the community. It's better for the environment as well. And I think it's just a good quality right now. I think it's just a good quality right now.
We're really excited to host a girls' fast pitch camp with the UTEP softball players. They're here all day. It's an all-day camp for girls aging eight to 12. And they're really out here having a good time, learning the fundamentals and the basics of softball.
I think it's important for youth this age just to make sure they have the right mechanics down and doing the fundamental things right, things correctly. So that way, when they get older, it's easy for them to do.
Having an all-skills camp is really cool. Having it in a one day, it's even better. I really like the fact that they're focusing on different strains. So they separated the catchers and they're still running bases. And I saw them working on pitching. You know, giving the softball community a space to evolve is great.
The sports park brings people from all over the county. Because it's a large venue, it's one of the largest in the county for sports. Events like this one, the camp at the sports park are really great because it just provides another opportunity for our community children to come out.
It's a beautiful location. The way the fields are actually maintained. Very proud of the fact that there are almost a mini professional baseball fields out there. So we have hundreds of people coming to El Paso and really taking advantage of the sports park. And it is an economic driver for the east side and for the entire county.
Come play with us at El Paso County Park!
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
We think this park needs more shade.
These are the biggest ones.
It is too hot in El Paso, and so we want to make it more beautiful, at the same time create shade more pleasant for everyone to enjoy.
And we're planting nighty trees, set aside at the park, all over the park and in the golf course. So we're very excited and thankful that we were chosen by the El Paso Downtown Lions Club for this project.
Today, I haven't counted them, but I'm going to guess around 10 from my organization. We also partnered with Echo El Paso, and they came and have people helping. We also asked for the master gardeners to come from Texas A&amp;M.
I know that it will bring much-needed shade and just, again, just a windbreaker as well for, you know, the heavy gusty winds that we get here in El Paso. So it's going to be something that the whole community will be able to enjoy.
Everyone has been talking in the news about a carbon-reduction-type machinery, some sort of mechanism. Well, nature's got us beat on that, and that's trees. Not only do we have a scarcity of trees here, but they also help cool the ground, combat the urban heat island effect. As they grow, they also beautify our neighborhoods, our parks.
This is the fun part of our job. This is what we love to do. So happy to help however we can, and just excited that we were selected by both of these agencies.
So we're planting a lot of drought-tolerant native trees. So we got Palo Verde's, we got Arizona ash, we got raywoods.
Once they're established, they won't need as much water. Create a lot of shade.
But also become and invite habitats, wildlife. Everybody who's been a long resident of El Paso knows in winter, we see a lot of very exotic birds.
We just like to do this, to enhance the community.
I want to welcome everybody today to the El Paso County and Lower Valley Water District ribbon-cutting event for the first-time wastewater project for the El Conquistador Alhura subdivision.
So today, we connected two more neighborhoods to sewer services. So these are two neighborhoods that now don't have to rely on septic tanks, that many of which are 20, 30 years old, have started to fail, can cause very serious health issues for the residents.
Because you have to be, I mean, you have to be careful that it won't get spilled, or you have to be very...
Commissioners Court has reconvened to a regular open session. Judge, at this time, we'd like to go ahead and pull up item number six again, will be public comment.
Sure. Thank you. Hi, Betsy.
Good afternoon. I promise I'll be brief, because I know Angela has been patiently waiting. But I wanted to come back to public comment for just a moment, so that I could introduce Minnie Olgin to Commissioners Court and to everyone who is listening. Minnie joins us from, she's actually been owning her own consulting business. And then previous to that, she worked for Charles Schwab and for the city of El Paso. She's joining us as our chief human resources officer, starting today. So on her first day, we thought, what's better than coming before Commissioners Court, right?
Perfect timing.
But we're just so excited. She has over 20 years of experience in human resources in the private and the public sector. I had an opportunity to work with Minnie years ago, just through the local HR society. And I know that she is a very high-caliber, service-oriented professional. During the process, we had some great candidates. But what really made Minnie stand out for me, for the county, was her commitment to listening to what the customers' needs are. And knowing that she represents the organization, but listening to see how she can meet the needs of the actual customer, which is our department heads and our employees. So I wanted to give Minnie a chance just to introduce herself.
Thank you.
And I hope you'll help me welcome her to the county.
Thank you. Minnie.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Very excited to be here. And I feel like I've been taking a breather and started cheating a little bit by being at home so much. So I'm very excited to be here and meeting people in person and virtually, and have the opportunity to make an impact. I really miss, I have to say this, I have to miss, working and knowing that what I'm doing impacted the community. So I'm glad to be back in the public sector.
Well, welcome. And you'll find that the commissioners are really supportive for, you know, really. You talk about a mission statement and being a family, but I really believe in, because of my experience, this is one of the better places it should be. The best place to work at is the county. We have incredible employees that work for the county. I'm very proud of who they are. So we ask you to help us take care of them and to make sure you bring things up that you feel could be something that we need to know, whether from hiring or retention. It's going to be really important. I do have some relationship with Charles Schwab and how they do things. So maybe that's where you got a lot of your customer service from them, because I've known how they work, and they do very well in taking care of their employees. So we welcome you, on behalf of myself and the commissioners here. We welcome you, and like we said, anything that we could do to help you with your task of keeping this county really being a family, and that we do care for them. And they do some amazing work for us. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Can I say something else? I also want to thank our previous, Sam, for the work that he did in the interim. He always jumps in and helps out. So if you're listening, Sam and others, we really thank you for everything you did. You've done such an incredible job of holding the fort and taking care of a lot of things during a very, very difficult time, especially during the pandemic, and heading the committee along with Nicole, in helping us through this difficult decisions that we had to make with the pandemic and the virus and the masking and all these other things. So, Sam, thank you very much, also on behalf of our commissioners. There he is. Hi, Sam. Well, just want to thank you. I hope you heard a little bit about that. But no, really, it was very difficult times, but I think you did an exceptional job. And I know that the commissioners would support that, you know, that gratitude that we have for what you did.
Thank you, Judge.
I shared with Sam recently, with our department head team, I shared our thanks for him. But I have a new official title for Sam, or maybe it's unofficial. He's the interim interim.
The go-to.
Yes, he is the go-to.
The go-to. And he always does, very passionate and detailed and firm. I could use another word, but firm would be fine. And funny and witty, so...
He is. And he never takes the role of interim as like just a holdover. He continues to advance our mission. He continues to try to find ways to improve how we do business, and I can't thank him enough.
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you.
We'd like to go ahead and move to item number 15, Tax Assessor Collector. Item number 15, Accept the 2022 No New Revenue and Voter Approval Tax Rate Calculations for the El Paso County. No new revenue rate, 0.426289 per $100. Voter approval rate, 0.460808 for $100.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and Court, Commissioners Court. I'm Angela Brinkley with the County Tax Assessor's Office. I'm here on behalf of Ruben Gonzalez, your County Tax Assessor Collector, who is unable to be with us this afternoon. We are here to do our annual presentation of the no-new revenue and voter approval rates that are necessary so we can begin our truth in taxation process and budget adoption process. With that being said, I'm going to introduce you to Ms. Leti Ramos, the accounting manager for the county tax office, and she will be presenting the rates as calculated.
Yes, Leti Ramos for the county tax office.
Okay, the 86th regular session of the Texas Legislature passed as be effective January 1, 2020. The bill brought changes to notices, categories, and calculations. Two purposes of truth in taxation laws: to make taxpayers aware of tax rate proposals; allow taxpayers to roll back or limit tax increases, reducing them to 3.5%; four, truth in taxation principles: the property owners have a right to know about increases in their appraised value and to be notified of estimated taxes that could result from the new value. A taxing unit other than a water district must calculate its no-new revenue rate and voter approval tax rate before adopting a current rate. A taxing unit must publish a notice about either a public hearing or meeting to adopt a tax rate. If the taxing unit adopts a rate that exceeds the voter approval rate, voters may limit the rate. The no-new revenue rate: the tax rate that would generate about the same amount of revenue received in the year before on property taxed in both years. If the property values rise, the no-new revenue rate will go down and vice versa. The voter approval rate: a calculated maximum rate allowed by law without voter approval. The 2022 no-new revenue tax rate is .426289. The 22 voter approval rate, as adjusted for unused increment, is .460808, compared to the unadjusted increment rate of 48487. I would like to ask the court to accept the 2022 no-new revenue and the voter approval rate calculations for the El Paso County. The no-new revenue rate is .426289 per $100 of value, and the voter approval rate is .460808 for the $100 of value.
Move to approve.
Judge, I just wanted to, I don't know if I can bring it up in the context here, or, because we're talking about truth in taxation, and if we're... So we have to publish these rates in the newspaper or...
Commissioner, these are the calculated rates?
Right.
And the next one is when you'll go with the proposed rates?
Okay. I just wanted to see if there is willingness, or if we could actually do this. And all this talk about tax rates and the rollback rate and everything that we do, you know, the time that I've spent at the Capitol, we've, you know, been demonized, and, you know, the state legislators have really tried to blame local taxing entities for increases in tax rates and taxing and such. But they, you know, I feel like we should also, if we're going to take out ads in the newspaper discussing our tax rate, we should also take out another in the newspaper, either on the same page or on the next page, showing what unfunded mandates are in El Paso County, and what percentage of our budget and what percentage of our tax rate those unfunded mandates actually... What value those are. Because I feel like, you know, we're constantly being told that we have to do more to live within our means, and that we have to be capped, and that we have to do this, and we have to do that. But at the same time, every legislative session, the legislature sends down unfunded mandates, and causing us to have to increase our spending. And so I feel like real truth in taxation is not just saying, you know, what is the no-new revenue rate? What is the voter approval rate? But also, what is, in my opinion, state tax that counties are being burdened with? And so I don't know if that's something that we can talk about in this context, or Christina, or... But I wanted to bring that up for us to start doing, you know, every year, so that voters can see, you know, and talk to their state delegation, and let the state delegation know that we don't want to continue having them vote for unfunded mandates.
So, good afternoon, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. So for this item, it's just the acceptance of the rates that have been presented to the Tax Assessor Collector's Office. So in a lot of ways, this is a ministerial action that the court would take. So probably to have further discussion on that, it would be more appropriate at the next one. And that's when the court is going to talk to the public, or at least outline for the public what you all will be doing in terms of any notices and publication. That's the publication piece for the next one. So if you want, for right now, you can go ahead and move to accept the proposed tax rate, and then continue that conversation on the next agenda item.
Okay, I'll second the judge's motion then, okay?
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Sanbuniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 16, Accept the 2022 No New Revenue and Voter Approval Tax Rate Calculations for the El Paso County Hospital District. No new revenue rate, 0.235153 per $100. Voter approval rate, 0.249838 per $100.
Leti Ramos for the tax office. The El Paso County Hospital District, 2022 tax rates per $100 of property value is the no-new revenue tax rate is .235153. The voter approval tax rate is .249838. And the adopted 2021 rate was .258145. I would like to ask the court to accept the 2022 No New Revenue and Voter Approval Tax Rate Calculations for the El Paso County Hospital District. The no-new revenue rate is .235153 for $100 of value, and the voter approval rate is .249838 for $100 of value.
Same as, yeah, second.
Aye. Commissioner Leon?
I'm going to vote aye, but I just want it, maybe Angela, or you can explain to our listeners what that actually means as far as the property taxes going, as I see, going lower.
Yes, sir. Angela Brinkley for the county tax office. I'm happy to contribute what I can as to that question. The no-new revenue rate is sort of thought of as the lowest rate you can adopt, and ensure that you still collect the same amount of funds as you did in the prior, taxing the same properties, okay? And your voter approval rate is the maximum you can go to without incurring a rollback election by the voters. This year was an anomaly, as we heard from CAB, the values this year were insane as far as the increases in property values. So you'll notice here, the current tax rate was disclosed, and the voter approval rate this year is below the current tax rate. And we saw that for both UMC as well as the county. That's because the high values, how high the property values rose this year. The tax rates, as calculated by the tax office, have an inverse relationship to the valuation. So the higher the values, the lower the rates, including the highest rate, the voter approval rate. That's going to drop directly with the increase in property values. Whereas when property values decrease, the rates will rise. So that rate is completely dependent on the total taxable base, or the value of that tax base.
So a person that has their home increase in value actually will see a drop in their property taxes? For that reason?
No, sir. No, sir. This is talking about the whole, the entire tax base. The rate applies to the entire...
So what Angela, I'm sorry, Angela, but what she's presenting is just how the numbers calculate out. You are not adopting the rate under these two... You are not adopting the rate under these two items. You're not even proposing a rate for UMC today. UMC will bring back that proposal. And from what we understand, the rate that they're proposing that they built their budget based on will generate no new revenue to the hospital district. So it won't be a reduction in the amount they pay, but it will be a reduction in the rate they pay.
And these are just the calculations that we're...
So basically, this is like a floor and a ceiling.
Many people think of it in that.
This is telling you the floor and ceiling.
And we're going to work within the floor and within that ceiling to figure out which rate best fits us, right?
Yes.
And UMC has proposed the floor for their tax rate, but it could, I mean, if we have discussion, we could change it, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. You have a wonderful afternoon.
Okay, sorry for the delay. Thank you.
Going back to the regular order, item number ten, discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. We have Chief Rodriguez on the line with us today to give us an update from emergency management on our response to COVID-19.
Excellent. Welcome, Chief.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to give you all an update on COVID response thus far. Not too much to update you all on. Dr. Cuarenta gave a good update, a good detailed update last week, but we do have one significant update that we do want to inform the court of. And this is two new testing sites that the city and the county are going to be putting together effective tomorrow. So the city of El Paso partnering with the CDC, partnering with the CDC's Increasing Community Access to Testing Program, LTS, the county, and other community partners to help expand the city's free COVID testing opportunities. And this one in particular for our most vulnerable members of society. So this testing is going to be available for individuals who meet the following criteria: individuals that are symptomatic, have been exposed to COVID-19, are high risk, excuse me, have a high-risk medical condition, and pregnant women. Testing is going to be available at the following locations and dates. Beginning tomorrow, Tuesday, August 9th, we'll be opening up our first site, which will be at UTEP. This is going to be at its previous location at 33 North Mesa. Hours are going to be Monday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 3 p.m. And then the following week, on Monday, August 15th, partnering with the county, we'll be setting up a mega testing site at the county sports park at 1708 North Saragossa. This will be Monday through Friday as well with the same operating hours of 7:30 to 3 p.m. Your results will be received via email and text within 24 to 40 hours right after you get tested. Insurance is not required, but we are going to be collecting insurance information and bill those that are insured. We also want to remind the public that the city's community clinics are also available Monday through Saturday, 8 to 5 p.m. You can contact, excuse me, you can make an appointment through apstrong.org or you can contact the COVID hotline at 212-6843. And as a reminder, the two, the three testing clinics that we have available are at 9341 Alameda, 7380 Remcon, and 9566 Railroad. And unless the court has any questions for me, that's our update for this week.
Any questions? Well, thank you. Appreciate that update.
Sure thing, Judge. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Rodriguez.
Next, we'll go to updates from the court. Judge, do you have any updates?
No, you know, we've had some conversations on, there were some concerns about maybe the situation with migrants coming in and having certain... We've looked at that. There's no indication that that's, you know, that that's the case at this time, but we keep looking at that very closely. That if there's any impact on our community because of, and we have not seen any, you know, uptick or anything like that, any difference from our regular community. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon?
Nothing new.
Commissioner Stout? Commissioner Oggi?
No.
That concludes this item.
Thank you.
I'll take no action for item number ten. Item number eleven, American Rescue Plan. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the First Amendment to Chapter 381 Economic Development Program Agreement, Financial Assistance for Safety, Technology, and Economic Resilience with Workforce Solutions Borderplex, related to American Rescue Plan Act provisions of the county's financial assistance for safety, technology, and economic resilience program. Funding in the amount of $500,000 is available in SGARP ALA N21 operating expense. Contract number 20220311.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Michael Hernandez, Director of Economic Development. It's my pleasure to present this item to you, which allows us to proceed with our efforts to change out the source of funding from general fund dollars to ARPA dollars with another one of our community partners who helped us with our faster program. This one is Workforce Solutions Borderplex. And in particular, they helped us with technical assistance for many businesses in the area. As you recall, we helped people, businesses, hundreds of businesses, with loans, grants, and technical assistance. This form of technical assistance helped businesses gain some digital transformation. That allowed some businesses to actually provide, present or create an online presence. In some cases, it allowed them to grab some gear so they could actually work more efficiently. And in other cases, it allowed recipients, staffs, to have some training so they could actually become more digital literate. So this was a successful program. We're looking to work with Workforce Solutions Borderplex to proceed through this amendment, which would change out $500,000 from general funds dollars to ARPA funds. As I mentioned to you before in a previous item, this is just something that we're looking to do to gain back for the general fund, that money that we think is appropriate. And so we're grateful also to the county attorney's office, our colleagues at the auditor's office, as well as administrative staff to help us with helping folks understand the guidelines from ARPA and communicating that clearly to them. And so I ask for your favorable consideration of this item. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions at this time? Not whatsoever. Just a great partnership. Leila's done a tremendous job in helping out a lot of challenges on the workforce side. And so I think this is really going to be able to help us move forward. Move to approve? Second.
Commissioner Oggi?
Aye. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Item number twelve, purchasing. Authorize the single-source award for the purchase of West Publishing Thomas Reuters Westlaw Edge subscription for the County of El Paso County Attorney's Office in the amount of $158,469.87 for three years to West Publishing Thomas Reuters in Houston, Texas. Funds are available in general fund, county attorney books, and subscriptions. Pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 262.024C, as a single-source item, it is exempt from the provisions of the County Purchasing Act. Single-source will be reevaluated as required to ensure compliance with statute.
Welcome, Karen.
Good afternoon, Judge. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Karen Davidson, County Purchasing Agent. We are asking the court to authorize a single-source purchase for Westlaw Edge. We've done single-source purchases with Westlaw before, but Westlaw Edge has additional functionalities and features that are really going to help our county attorneys in the work that they do. It does also include artificial intelligence throughout and offers other things that different softwares cannot do. So we are asking for the authorization and approval of the single-source for the three years for $158,469.87. And I'm certainly here to answer any questions on this purchase.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Oggi?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, approve the purchase of removal and installation of two Marley cooling towers for the El Paso County Coliseum using Region 19 Contract 22-7434, awarded to Train US Inc. of El Paso, Texas for a grand total of $240,047. Purchasing approved on August 3rd, 2022. Funding is available in CIP 22 Facilities, INT 11, R N, R E P.
Good afternoon, Judge. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Karen Davidson, County Purchasing Agent. This is a request for your approval to award the removal and installation of two cooling towers. Our Coliseum is anxiously waiting for these. These are for the Rhino facility that keeps up our ice, and both of them need to be replaced. We will be using a Region 19 contract with Train USA of El Paso, and it is for $240,047. And certainly can answer any questions you have on this purchase.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Oggi?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Karen. Have a great day. Thank you.
Item number fourteen, auditor. Pursuant to the Texas Government Code Title 10, Section 2256.003, please accept the attached investment report for the third quarter and nine months ended June 30th, 2022.
Welcome, Edward.
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. Edward Leon, County Auditor. As stated, this is the third quarter investment highlight report. Next slide, please. This, the report is linked directly to the county's strategic plan regarding the investment goals. The first goal is to invest funds on the principles of safety, liquidity, and diversification, followed by a second goal of return on investment. Next slide, please. This is just a great comparison. The Treasury rates are beating Texpool rates and Texpool Prime rates. As expected, on July 27th of '22, the Fed voted to raise the short-term interest rate by 75 basis points, following the 75 basis points hike in June. There's been a total of four hikes, rate hikes totaling 225 basis points on the year. 25 of 50 basis points and 275 basis points. The cumulative June increase of 150 basis points is the steepest rise since the early 1980s. The county's investment advisor, Hilltop Security, stated that Charles Evans, the Chicago Federal Fed President, has said he anticipates another 50 basis hike in September at the meeting, but is not ruling out another 75 basis increase if inflation doesn't show improvement between now and then. And some have heard that it'll probably be another 150 basis points over the next three meetings. So at this point, even though Treasuries are a little bit higher, the pools, actually, their rates are growing on a regular basis, monthly. So it makes more sense keeping our money in the pools rather than locking it in a Treasury until maturity. Next slide, please. This is a comparison of the investment maturity summary as of June 30th of '22 versus 2021. The investments were $391.8 million for June of '22, compared to the prior year of $333.4, an increase of $58.3 million, of which $139.5 million is related to ARPA funds. Interest earned for the fiscal year was $1.1 million, compared to the last year of $462,000, an increase of $663,000, or 143.4%, which is mainly due to the change in the interest investment mix and the higher interest rates. Next slide, please. This is the historical market environment. In May, the fast-rising inflation forced most, the more aggressive 50 basis points hike in June. Fed officials increased the overnight rate, another 75 basis points, the biggest move in almost 30 years. The current expectation is that the Federal Reserve will continue hiking these rates, bringing it to the overnight target rate of about 3% by the end of the year. It's also said that even though the rates are going to go high by the end of the year, it's possible if inflation starts coming down, the Feds will start reducing rates again. Next slide, please. This is the investment yield rates. Above's a comparison of the interest rates for the investment pools and managed bank or depository. The two highest yielding pools are Texpool Prime and Texas Class. Both contain commercial paper respectively, consisting of about 58.6% and 90.7% in each of the investment pools. And we only point this out because the more commercial paper you have, the higher risk it is on those investments. And just to mention, our depository account right now is paying .50 basis points from 0 to 150 million and 0% thereafter. So most of our money is being shifted from the depository into the investment pools. Next slide, please. This is the Prime Investment Pools, just to show you Texpool Prime, the types of investments, and the portfolio by maturity compared to Texas Class and its portfolio breakdown. Next slide, please. This is Texpool. It shows the type of investment and the portfolio by maturity. Next slide, please. The three-month Treasury benchmark versus the portfolio yield. The chart compares the portfolio monthly weighted average yield to the benchmark 90-day Treasury bill yield. Factors that impact a portfolio yield are the amount of cash in the bank. The portfolio weighted average yield has increased 92 basis points for June of '22. That's basically 1.05% when compared to June of 2021, which is .131% due to an increase in interest rates. Next slide, please. This is just the investments all combined. Shows that the county funds peak and then decline through mid-December. All funds were spent down during the first quarter. And the ratio of Texpool, Texpool Prime, and cash changed with the cash ratio increasing and Texpool and Texpool Prime decreasing. Until the county starts receiving its bulk of Eglorm property taxes after December, then you start seeing cash diminish and the investment pools rise. Next slide, please. This is just the same concept, just the general fund by itself. You can see how the drawdown is towards the end of the year, around October, November. The lowest point is in December. And then once we start receiving funds in mid-December through February, it spikes and a lot of those funds are put into investments. Next slide, please. Same concept here, debt service fund. And it just shows you the debt service inflows at the same cash patterns as the general fund. Disbursements occur in February, March, August, and September, when the debt payments and interest are due. And the low point in debt service is September, when the last payment is made. Next slide, please. This is the Capital Project Fund. This is basically a culmination of any bond proceeds when we have issuances, like the notes that we just recently issued. Also, the two cents from the maintenance and operation portion of the Eglorm taxes, which funds the Capital Improvement Fund of the county. Next slide, please. This is the investments by fund type as of June 30th, showing you how much is in each of the funds. Next slide, please. With that, that completes my presentation. If anybody has any questions?
Anything? Anything that you want to highlight, sort of captures the direction of what's happening, Edward?
I can tell you right now that with the rate hikes and the additional rate hikes, we've factored in that we will be receiving additional revenue going into the new fiscal year. We've tried to be cautious and not overly optimistic, but you're going to see significant change in the interest revenue projected in 2023. But like I say, at the same time, they think that the Fed may start reducing rates next fiscal year. But that's to be seen. It depends on what happens with inflation and how the economy does. But if we do get some long-term rates that are higher, we usually don't go out more than, more than two years. We'll be working with our investment advisor hired by the county to make sure that we are being as frugal as possible, but at the same time, trying to make sure we get the greatest interest possible while remaining safety and liquidity.
I mean, it's a little better than I would think. I mean, if you look at those and we look at the general population or our own investments, they seem to be quite... we look at the general population or our own investments, they seem to be quite, quite reasonable.
It's because of the pools, the pools and the funds that they manage, they are using so much, they have so much more out there in the investments, and that's how you can garner those bigger rates, those higher rates. I know in our personal savings account, we'd be lucky to get half a percent interest right now. And even putting it out there for a year or two, you're not going to get really much, much above that. So, and the same thing with Treasuries, you know, they're going a little higher, but you have to go out so long in order to get those rates. And if the rates change and you're locked into something, you're better off just being in the liquidity of a pool that's going to rise every time the interest rates rise.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Just need a motion to accept, please.
Second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Edward. Likewise.
Thank you, Judge.
Item number eighteen, Public Works. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the supplemental contract between owner and contractor with Black Stallion Construction, Inc. of El Paso, Texas for the demolition and renovation of the first and third floor public restrooms at the courthouse to be in compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act standards. Funds in the amount of two-hundred-thousand-eight-hundred-eight dollars and ninety-six cents are available in CP, CP County Cap Twelve Improvement ADA and CP Replace Twenty-Two Improvements ADA. Contract number two thousand twenty-two zero four three three.
Good afternoon, Judge. County Commissioners, Robin Sully, Facility Maintenance Director. There are several violations identified in the current restrooms located at the MBR. Some of these are incorrect sinks and incorrect heights of the toilets, and the partition doors and walls need to be replaced. These demolition and new upgrades will ensure that the restrooms are in compliance with the ADA standards. Sully, to your questions.
Thank you. Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I just, I would like to, Robin, you said MDR, but the agenda item says courthouse.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did courthouse. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sully. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Item number nineteen, grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioners' Court for final acceptance and approval. Approve and authorize the Planning and Development Department to submit a complete application for funding through the Texas Water Development Board's Flood Infrastructure Fund for County Stormwater Project Can One, a bridged application number one-three-seven-nine-zero, in the amount of one-million-nine-hundred-sixty-thousand dollars via a combination of grant funds and zero-interest loans. Further, approve and authorize the county judge to sign all necessary documents related to the application upon review and approval from the county attorney's office. Contract number two thousand twenty-two zero five eight one.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Mozares Raj, Public Works Planning Development Department. Just asking your favorable approval to submit this final four-of-four application to Texas Water Development Board for Flood Infrastructure Funds. As the court recalls, the county, the department got authorized to submit four applications back in two thousand, in June of two thousand twenty, to seek funding to address stormwater issues on the east and west side of the county. So far up to date, we received two grant-funded applications for a total of thirty-seven million dollars, and the third one is about to be funded hopefully in October, and this is the fourth and final one for this cycle for Texas Water Development Board. We're just asking for your approval, upon approval, of course, from the county attorney's office.
Thank you, Monsir. Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Have a great day, Monsir.
Thank you, Judge. You too.
And week. Thank you.
Item number twenty, Budget and Finance. Budget hearing pursuant to the Property Tax Code Section two-six-point-zero-five-D, propose a tax rate. Pursuant to the Property Tax Code Section two-six-point-zero-five-A, adopt a tax rate for El Paso County.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Jessica Garza, Budget and Fiscal Policy. Get to see me a lot today.
Thank you.
On your screen, you'll see a breakdown of our tax rates between the school district, the city of El Paso, UMC, and EPCC. From this slide, you can see that our tax rate generally makes up fifteen percent of the total tax rate for residents in the county. Next slide, please. This is a quick overview of the historical tax rates in the county for MNO, INS, and then the increase or decrease per year. For two thousand twenty-three, that rate on the bottom is the no-new revenue rate of point-four-two-six-two-eight-nine as presented by our tax office earlier. Next slide, please. And then this, this slide just gives you kind of a comparison with the El Paso County rates compared to the city rates. The arrows indicate that the rate that was adopted was higher than the no-new revenue that rate, and so you can see that the last two years, El Paso, I shouldn't say that, last year, we adopted the same rate as the no-new revenue rate. And from the chart below, or the graph below, you can see that we tend to mirror the tax rate increases and decreases with the city, whether intentional or unintentional. That's how it, it looks. And if I can ask the team to pull up the one slide with the total with the tax rates?
One second. Please email to Alexis.
Thank you. This is just a quick overview of the rates that were presented this morning with the tax office. At the top, you can see that our total taxable value is just under, well, is about fifty-four-point-five billion. This is a value change of six, six billion dollars or thirteen percent from the prior year. As the tax assessor's office presented earlier, the no-new revenue rate came in at point-four-two-six-two-eight-nine, and the voter approval rate came in at point-four-six-zero-eight-zero-eight per property valuation. And so in the center there is our current rate at point-four-seven-zero-one-eight-one, and it's kind of highlighted in red because it is higher than the voter approval rate. So that's not a rate that we would be able to maintain this year without going for an election. You'll see the average home value at the bottom there increased from one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty dollars to one-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, which is an increase of twelve percent on the taxable values for average homeowners. We will, we will have additional discussions on tax rates and values as we get into the budget hearings this week. At this time for today, I would like to recommend that the county move to approve the voter approval rate in accordance with our financial policies as this sets the ceiling as we move into budget hearings for the adoption of our tax rate for fiscal year twenty-three's budget. Let's see. If, if the, once, once the rate is approved, it sets in motion for both the statutorily required newspaper publications and the required public hearing at the voter approval rate. If so moved, our tax rate ad will run in next week's paper for publication on the fifteenth, and it would, our public hearing would be August twenty-second here at the courthouse at five-thirty. The public hearing is still required to be in person in accordance with the tax code, and so the members of the court, we would ask that you be here in person for that. Lastly, I want to point out, going back to that slide, that the, the proposed rate, the voter approval rate of the point-four-six-zero-eight-zero-eight, which is in the right-hand column, would generate an additional nineteen million over the no-new revenue rate and would be used to assist in meeting the county's budgetary growth for fiscal year twenty-three, which is approximately four-hundred-and-forty-one million dollars as we presented in July, the July special meeting. This, this is for the items we discussed with you over prior months, or, let me start over again. This budget includes the items that we've discussed with you over the prior months, such as wage adjustments, new positions, growth in the Health and Life Fund, as well as other initiatives such as the Animal Welfare Clinic, the VA One-Stop Lease, contractual increases, and other needed capital investments. As a reminder, I would like to inform the court and the community that today's motion does not adopt the tax rate. It merely proposes the tax rate that will be discussed again, as I stated earlier, during our budget hearings. And we will look, we work toward achieving the no-new revenue rate. The budget that was presented to you in your books on the twenty-fifth is based on the no-new revenue rate for purposes of budget. Additionally, we will seek the public's feedback during our public hearing on the twenty-second, and ultimately, the tax rate will be adopted no later than fourteen days after that public hearing. So with that, I would ask the court that to consider today's recommendation in approving or proposing the voter approval rate, and I believe the judge has the motion, the language for the motion. If not, we can read that.
I just wanted to hear from, from Wally. Any additional comments or?
Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. Wally Harbrook, Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Jessica wrapped it up very well and made that presentation. Today's action is merely proposing the tax rate, and that does set the ceiling of the highest amount the court could consider during the budget adoption process. As Jessica stated, the goal is to come in at the no-new revenue tax rate, and the budget that was presented to you was you taking that tax rate calculation into account. Commissioner Stout, the item you spoke to earlier when the tax assessor was presenting these, the language that we will place in the El Paso Times, and we do place this in the El Paso Times because of its wider viewership for the public, is required statutory language that we cannot change. The language has to be very precise as to what is published. However, if the court would like to discuss placing an additional ad in any news publications and on our website to also inform the public as to how much county dollars are expended that are statutorily required by the state for which we don't have an offsetting revenue source or a fee that could be used to set those, that is a publication we could consider publishing at any point in time as well. We just have to keep those two publications separate and worded specifically, but Jessica did a good job on summarizing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Excuse me. I understand that we can't change the wording, but I, but I still feel like whenever we post something about our tax rate and our budget, we should also let people know that seventy percent of our budget is mandated by the state, and so that people can see that we're actually being very good stewards of their, of their dollars and, and, you know, even though we're looking at bringing in two-hundred-and-ten million dollars in tax revenue, you know, our, if we pass the no-new revenue rate, a huge chunk of that, or maybe most of that, is actually, could, you know, is going towards state-mandated programming and services. So can we, can, I don't know if you all are willing to either put, if it's a half-page, then we use the other half-page for that, or if it's one-page and one-page, but just so we can let people know about that. I think we've never done that before, and I think we should start doing it every year.
I think that's possible for us to do, yes.
Okay.
I don't know that we'd be able to run it at the same time, but we could, we could definitely run it with the budget adoption.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be my only concern is the timelines, excuse me, Wally Harbrook, again, from budget. The timelines required from the El Paso Times to get those proofs back and forth are pretty tight, but certainly, we could get something in there before we finalize the budget, adopt the budget, and before we also adopt the tax rate. I think that's very doable. For the publication for our hearings, they are quarter-page ads, and we could take out a similar quarter-page ad in the Times as well to let the public know how much of what we do is, does not have funding supplemented by the state.
Okay. And so maybe this, maybe this time around, we can't have it at the same time, but for years in the future, can we plan on doing that? Just so, I mean, because I understand it's a
Absolutely.
It's a great idea.
Timing issue for y'all, and we don't want to overburden you, but I still would like to, I don't know what the best time or what, you know, the best place, because I just feel like seeing one here and the other one here, it's going to make more sense to people, right?
Yeah. Are there any other questions?
Yes, if I may, Judge.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Oggy?
Thank you. So Jessica, I just, I want to make sure I understand exactly what we're doing. As I was preparing for today and going through the backup, I was very, very, very happy to see that the tax rate that was being recommended by staff was the no-new revenue rate. And in the backup, it does say that the recommendation is to propose the no-new revenue tax rate of the zero-point-four-two-six-two-eight-nine. But in hearing you just a minute ago, you're asking us to actually approve the voter approval rate, so I'm confused about that. I mean, I was very excited about the no-new revenue because that's exactly what I wanted to advocate for, but now you're asking us to vote for something different.
So that's my fault. So normally, and so it's, it was basically translation, if you will. So we, we normally follow the policy and recommend to the court to adopt the voter-approved rate, because that allows you two, two or three things it allows. It allows you, one, to have a public hearing that you're not required to have if you adopt the no-new revenue rate. It requires you to have it, and it also allows you to have policy discussion over this next week as you're going through budget. So while we built, and my, my message to Jessica was build a budget on no-new revenue, the, and that was from what I've heard from the court, but what that does when we build a budget on no-new revenue is where you've seen in your book, it brings our fund balance down below your goal. And so it allows you to have a policy discussion to say, do you intend to do that, or do you want to consider any adjustment to the tax rate to bring that fund balance up or not? You know, it's completely, of course, the court's choice, but our policy always says adopt the no-new, I'm sorry, the voter-approved rate as a proposal so that you can have those policy discussions, hear from the public, and then adopt whatever rate that meets your goals and your budget.
Between the two.
Between the two, or at the no, and it, and the policy does stay, say, over, we propose the high ceiling, but we work to go towards the no-new revenue rate.
We can always go down, but we can't
Yes, sir. That's correct. That's correct. So if in the, if in the discussion, because when you all see, as you see what it does to fund balance, if you think, I'm not willing to go that low, you'll be able to have a policy discussion and say, well, are we willing to go low, or are we willing to move the tax rate at all, or if something else, as you said, Commissioner, it just gives you the ability. You cannot ever go back up once you propose a lower rate.
And I've always liked the flexibility because of these policy discussions and, you know, what are you going to give up? And it's the, we allow the public to come say that, because it's not just up to us to say, we're going to do this, but you're going to be impacted in this particular way. We're going to have less of something. And so I always liked the flexibility, because then you get to go through the whole process, and then at the end, you know, you adopt whatever between the two. So the other way, you can't. You already made that commitment without any policy discussions or whether or not we're capable of, of, you know, taking away something in order to keep that rate at that, at the no-new rate, so.
Right, right.
I've always liked the, I always liked the flexibility whenever you can make the same So, I've always liked the flexibility, whenever you can make the same decision then as you do now, I've always liked that. It's more discussions, the public can participate, and we're not making a decision for them, so.
And that was a lot of the conversation that we had after the agenda had been posted, or how to post for this item, is knowing that the court likes to engage the community. If we just, if we approve to propose the no new revenue rate, then you're not really required to have the public hearing either.
And you've already done it, so then you're not going to get the feedback.
So really, Commissioner, what you're authorizing us to do is to move forward with proposing the voter approval rate, setting the publication and the public hearing date in order for that conversation to continue, rather than going with the floor level of the no new revenue rate, which takes out the other options.
So I understand, and normally, I would agree that flexibility is a good thing, but I feel like right now, there is so much anxiety from our residents and our taxpayers because of the valuations, because of the UMC proposed bond. I really feel like this is a way, if we do adopt the no new revenue rate now, it's a way for us to really be clear with the community how we at the county are committed to doing everything absolutely necessary to make sure that they don't pay more in taxes than they did last year because of the rise in valuations. So I understand, I understand that it's good to have flexibility, but I kind of feel like this is a way for us to send a message that we are committed to adopting the no new revenue rate.
I'm fine with leaving the flexibility. I think that, I think that we all want to work within the realm of the no new revenue rate, but until we see all the numbers, until we see what the budget really is going to look like, I feel like it's a little, a little early to do that. I don't want to hamstring, you know, our budget team or the county, and something we discover that we don't see right now comes up. So, I think, I think we're all very committed to working to get as close to the no new revenue rate as possible, definitely providing relief for our folks. So I'm fine with what we're talking about today.
I agree.
Yeah.
So I'll make that motion.
So the motion, there's some specific wording?
Judge has a motion, never mind. You do it, Judge. You've got, you've got the big line.
Okay, so, propose a property tax rate for El Paso County of .460808 per 100 assessed value for the 2023 tax year, which consists of a rate of .410783 per 100 assessed value for maintenance and operations of the county, and a rate of .050025 per 100 assessed value for payment of the principal and interest on the debt of the county. Further schedule and publish notice for a public hearing to receive public comment on the proposed rate as follows. The public hearing is to be held on Monday, August 22nd, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the Commissioners' Court Chambers, Third Floor, Room 303, El Paso County Courthouse, 500 East San Antonio Avenue. Please note that the public has two options in which to participate in the public hearing. Members of the public may attend in person at the El Paso County Courthouse, as noted earlier, or members of the public may participate and address the governmental body via telephone or video conference. To participate in the public hearing, please call 888-835-7276, or 888-8ELPASO. Agenda will continue to be posted online at https://double-slash-elpaso.novusagenda.com/agenda-public/dot. To watch online, please visit https://www epcounty.com/vide slash or 2RXYOS6Y6VKDLP5EMOOLA.
Second.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
No.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Jessica, and thank you, Wally. Thank you for being available. Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Judge, and this completes all the items on today's agenda.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Have a great week, and everybody else, or production, or translators back there, thank you for being with us, and Betsy and everyone else, have a great week. Thank you. And we will start budget sessions tomorrow at 9 o'clock. Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 2:36 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harburg, please send the update. I know you're...[1695.24]